All right. Good evening, Placerville. It looks like we are all here. So I will call this meeting to order at 5:01. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item two, roll call. Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragossa.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember No.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Moving on to ceremonial matters, we have none. So that brings us to item four, closed session report. City Attorney Ibrahim.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. The city council did meet in closed session tonight on two items. The council met on labor negotiations and provided direction to staff. The council also met on a claim that was made by Mr. Joseph Connolly on January 7th alleging a Brown Act violation that he claims occurred at the December 14th city council meeting. By unanimous vote, the city council has determined to reject the claim and conclude that no Brown Act violation has occurred, and this recommendation was supported by me as the city attorney as well. The council further directed me to provide a written response to Mr. Connolly outlining the explanations for its rejection of the claims. Finally, to the extent that Mr. Connolly has requested certain documents, those will be made available with the clerk's office, and we will again reiterate that in the written response, and that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, item five, adoption of the agenda.
Move for adoption.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Roll call vote.
Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Saragossa.
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember No.
Hi.
Councilmember Thomas.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item six, brief comments by the council. And Patty, let's start with you.
Well, my most recent and probably the main one is I attended along with you and city manager Cleve, a tourism symposium put on by the chamber, hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. It was so informative. It was just a really lovely day. They did a great job, and I learned a lot. I think that the main theme is a great partnership with them in this particular category. That's it.
Thank you, Patty. Jackie?
I don't have any city business really to report on. South Placerville, we're still recovering from the storm and cleaning up debris and trees and all that.
All right, thanks. Michael?
Just, I'll just say, it looked like it was a great fundraiser for more last Friday for their annual event. Was able to log on for a little bit and get a couple of items for ourselves. So we're happy to be part of that and just want to thank the community again for supporting what more does and for all the work Suzie and her staff do. So, thank you.
Michael, Dennis?
I'll second what Michael said for more, and other than that, I have no further comment. Thank you.
All right, I've got just a couple of quick comments. As Patty mentioned, I attended the tourism summit put on by Eldorado County Chamber of Commerce, and I want to thank Jody at Visit Eldorado for kind of spearheading that effort. It was really informative, and it was great to see all the partners that work in the tourism field around here. And also throughout the state, we heard some really great talks by Visit California, and it was a great event. And since there's some people in the audience, I thought that I would take this moment to highlight the city's 3-1-1 reporting system. If you have potholes or low water pressure, you want to report graffiti or code violations or any other issues that you may have within the city limits, you can go to Placerville, sorry, cityofplacerville.org/311 and report those things there, and city staff will get right on it. So take advantage of that resource, and I also want to give a shout out to the volunteers from the Upper Room and our public work staff for providing dump trucks and traffic control for a major cleanup on Broadway this past week, and also to our parks crew and public works for their continued work removing downed trees left over from that storm. So with that, that concludes my comments. So we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion or by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise.
I would like to pull item 7.6 for just a brief discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is, okay, so.
And I would move public comment.
Okay, so we will open the consent calendar up to public comment at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Public comment is not open for the consent calendar. If you're joining by phone, please select star nine to indicate your desire to speak, and you'll be called upon when it's your turn using the last three digits of your phone number. And if you're joining by computer, select the raise hand option at the bottom of your screen. Please limit your comments to three minutes and voluntarily state your name for the record. You'll be asked to unmute yourself before speaking. Does anybody wish to speak on the consent calendar at this time? Madam Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands raised for this item.
Okay, thank you. We will close public comment on item seven and bring it back to the council. So I believe that we need motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. Ms. O'Connell, can I get a roll call?
And just for the record, excuse me, Mayor Taylor, this is for items 7.1 through 7.5 only.
Thank you.
Mayor Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Saragossa?
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli?
Hi.
Councilmember No?
Hi.
Councilmember Thomas?
Hi.
All right. So moving on to 7.6, to the council appointment. Dennis, do you want to address this?
Do those things?
There, yeah, those should come under item nine.
Yeah.
Item fold from the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So we will, I'm still getting used to this. We don't always have items pulled from consent. So we will move on to item eight, public comment, and I want to take a moment here. This is a new format. I'm new to the mayor position, and I just want to take a moment to kind of go over how public comment works. So right now, we're doing open forum. This is for items that are not on the agenda. Anyone who would like to speak gets one pass at the mic. We limit the comments to three minutes. Now that we are on Zoom, we have a bell system set up so that at 30 seconds towards the end of three minutes, you'll hear a bell. That's your cue to wrap up your comments, and then comments will be ended at three minutes. I really hate interrupting people to end their comments. But in the fairness to all, there's a lot of topics on this agenda. We may have robust discussion and a lot of comments tonight, and I just, we want to hear everybody. We want to give everyone a chance. So please respect the three-minute limit, and we will be adhering to that tonight. Please state your name when making a comment. It just kind of helps us connect who we're talking to, and and it's also good for the record. If there's any questions that come up or matters that warrant further clarification, we will address that at my discretion at the end of public comment. It's not going to be a back and forth question and answer type of situation. There is no action by the council will be taken on non-agendized items. And we ask that you keep your comments relevant to city business. And with that, we will go ahead and open this up to the public.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll now take oral comments on item 8.2. This is relating to items that are not on the agenda. We'll start with Mandy Rodriguez. Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I'm calling in regard, in regards to the banner over Main Street that the Eldorado progressives and their social justice, BLM, and whatever other groups that they have going on were allowed to put up over Main Street. Now, I know that it did say Martin Luther King, and supposedly it was to celebrate Martin Luther King, but as we know, through the last week, the Democratic Party nationally and locally have stated that they were really using this as a way to cause attention or bring attention to the Freedom to Vote Act and the John Lewis Voting Rights Bill. You know, but some of those things, a lot of people don't agree with, and obviously, they didn't because it didn't pass in the Senate. So according to your rules, it says no religious or political advertisements will be displayed. Ms. Taylor, you said that you, there were discrepancies in the banner, and you had him pull it down and correct it, but it clearly states no religious or political advertisements will be displayed. And furthermore, I just got your email, and I find it very insulting that you would say or imply that Martin Luther King Day was not a favorite holiday of mine. That is an assumption. It's insulting. And it further divides us when you use somebody like Martin Luther King, who was apolitical. Apolitical, he wasn't a Democrat or a Republican. For you to try to throw that in my face and act like I don't like Martin Luther King, I mean, how insulting is that? So I would like to know why, if you guys are using this criteria, I'm not sure what the criteria was. I remember, you know, not being able to put blue line, thin blue line flags up because supposedly that triggered people's emotions, and they said that that was political. So now we're no longer allowed to have thin blue line flags to to support our law enforcement. So I'd like you guys to get your policy straight on what you're doing. You guys let the Eldorado progressives, you let them host the Council on Foreign Islamic Relations and have self-defense classes in your town hall. And that's great, but you are opening up the door. Like, I think the Proud Boys should have a open house at the town hall. And if that's the precedence that you're setting, then that should be allowed as well. So I say no politics. No banners that have any politics over Main Street. Is that too much to ask?
Thank you, Mandy.
I'll now take comment from Ruth. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I wanted to address two things. One was, I was hoping that you might go back in time and look when you changed this meeting from 6 o'clock to 5 o'clock. And the concerns were that there are people who are still working, and there are people who are commuting home. And as I recall, my memory isn't perfect, but as I recalled, you said you would not have open comment until 6 o'clock. You would take care of other business prior to that so that people could have that opportunity to get home, and you would have good governance of the involvement of the public. So if you could review what what you had promised to do back then, I'd appreciate it. And if you consider making open comment at 6, I think you'd get more participation. On the other issue I hadn't planned to speak on, but I will, Martin Luther King and the banner, because I had an integral part in that, and I just like to set the record straight, because some assumptions are being made. I'm actually the person who came up with one person, one vote for everyone. I had no knowledge, the timing was such, I knew nothing about what or wasn't being passed in the legislature, not in any way whatsoever. I'm sorry, I'm just not that up on everything going on nationally. And the timing of such was that was thought of, I think, much before whatever the previous caller was referring to. And there was nothing political about it. It's for everyone in every party to participate in voting. And the Martin Luther King Foundation asked that this year, instead of it being a celebration of Martin Luther King's life, that we instead of focus on making voting available to everybody. And it seems fairly innocuous to me. Non-political, I think we need to have a definition of what is political anyway, because it's being bantered around like it refers to all kinds of things. It's in the Constitution, one person, one vote for everyone. And I know that people do support the Constitution. So I think the whole thing was unfortunately kind of a knee-jerk reaction, and I'm glad that the banner went back up, and it wasn't, it was the peace and freedom piece, and I don't know, it was a different group than what the previous caller mentioned, who was on that banner. So anyhow, I give my last 30 seconds. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Ruth.
Caller with the last three numbers, 525. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm voluntarily identifying myself as Leo Bennett Cochon. And I'm also commenting first on the banner and appreciate the city working with the 501(c)(3), which is not allowed to be involved in politics in a very simple declarative statement for something Martin Luther King Jr. was known for throughout his life. Just to correct the world record, he was a very active political figure. Lots of difficulties with the powers that be at that time, and his death tragically allowed the passing of the Voting Rights Act. So I think it was a very appropriate and in these days shouldn't be part of our cultural wars, having that banner up. Secondly, I have the ability to take a look at your January 11th meeting and join you in your smiles at all the applause you received for what I'm calling, what you guys have said, but Cleve's Christmas miracle. I spoke to the Board of Supervisors last year about their emergency ordinance when we have big storms coming in, and it was so gratifying to see the leadership from our county's seat proactively having a pilot program, and now is continuing. It was a great meeting. You sued a few ruffled feathers. I know we're not supposed to sing it from the town hall yet, but in March, I think I'll write a letter to the Mountain Democrats that I do think this is the kind of thing we need to see more, and thank you so much for your leadership to all of Eldorado County.
Thank you, Leo.
Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
Good evening again, Kathy Lishman. I wanted to refer back to the special workshop you had at 3 o'clock today about the strategic plan. And because you allowed comments at the beginning, which I really appreciated, so that I could say some things I had on my mind. At the end, I was kind of disappointed at the way that you're going to involve the public. The county, when they started their process in 2014, engaged in extensive community outreach, which included a citizen engagement survey. As a result of those efforts, they developed their plan, and you are kind of going by it, add it backwards to write up what you write up. And then expect the citizens, I don't know how you've decided yet, to be able to comment meaningfully on it after it's already been developed is to me kind of, I'd have to say insulting to, as a member of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
I see no other hands raised, Madam Mayor, for this item. Actually, Madam Mayor, we do have a couple more that came in. So we'll consider this last call for item 8.2 oral communication. Sue Rodman, go ahead.
I hope you can all hear me. Good evening. I am very concerned when we had our night storm that left me snowbound and without power for four days and had to be dug out so that I could go to the grocery store. But I have quite a bit of tree damage that is getting cleaned up now, and I'm sure that a lot of other people do around the city. And I'm wondering how much damage we have on city properties and what your timeline is to get hold of the the city's tree damage and get that under control. And yes, fire season is coming, and if it stays as dry as it has for the last month, it will be here sooner than we would like, and it could be a very intense fire season if it stays dry. So I would encourage us to, all of us, to clean up our property and get our defensible space, and also for the city to get busy and work on the city properties so that they don't, aren't the beginnings of the fire that takes out the rest of Placerville. I'm thinking especially of Goldbug Park where it sits in a, in a very strategic position where if it goes, it will take out about half of Placerville along with it. So we really don't want to see another call to a fire this season, but we could. So please, people, and please, city, let's get busy and clean things up. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sue.
Call-in user one, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Hey, congratulations, Mayor Taylor. And then just a question on the strategic plan. I was listening in on that. I'm not sure what exactly that is. Is that a aspirational document? Is it something with teeth? Because I think of the general plan as the constitution for the city and other documents and plans flesh it out, like our zoning design guidelines. So the general plan to me is the controlling document. And I'm wondering if this strategic plan is something required by the state. What exactly is it? I missed the beginning of that discussion, so. And then on my street, we've had two abandoned houses, one of them for at least 15 years, one of them for going on five years. And I've asked staff about, can these go into receivership? I think one is maybe tied up in the courts. The other one, nothing is going to get done with it. It is a total fire danger, completely abandoned for 15 years. Weeds to the rooftop in the backyard. The roof is covered in a foot of dry leaves, branches everywhere. Total breeding ground for rats, and I just need to bring it to the council's attention that at least that one property needs to go into receivership right now, because it's a long process, and homeless breaking in and driving down property values. So, and is the meeting being broadcast on YouTube anymore? Because it's not being broadcast right now. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Call-in user one.
No further comments, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Cleve, do you want to clarify it all with the strategic plan? Those questions?
Sure, I can do that. The strategic plan does not really have teeth. It is simply a document we are using to set what our goals are to accomplish the things that the council and staff together want to accomplish in the city. So we'll outline you know, various, various goals and strategies that we want to accomplish related to whether it be infrastructure, economic development, et cetera, any of those areas, and those are spelled out in the document, but we, we will set goals and strategies at the council level, and then staff underneath that will send our own goals and strategies department by department to determine how we can accomplish and move forward with what we want to get done. So.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, I want to apologize to those out there. Unfortunately, our YouTube stream is not working tonight. We're trying to figure out what's wrong, and we will correct it if we can, but right now, only through this avenue, through the Zoom video are we able to access the meeting. So.
Okay, thank you. And just briefly, I would like to address Mandy's comment. I am sorry that you felt insulted. That was not my, I did email back to Mandy. I was trying to be responsive, and I will think twice about doing that. So I do, I do feel like you maybe slightly misinterpreted what I was trying to say, but I do, insult was not my intention. So I am sorry about that. Okay.
I would like to ask for a brief recess, actually. In accordance to AB 361, we do have to allow for public opportunity to participate. So if we're not able to allow the public to be able to access this, I just want to make sure that we are complying with, with our public disclosure laws. So if I can just have a brief minute to make sure that the Zoom is sufficient, or if we actually need to make sure that contemporaneous with that, that the YouTube streaming is occurring or not. So please stand by just briefly.
Okay. We will, we will go into a brief recess.
Okay, I have confirmed that we do need to stop the meeting during the service disruption. So please bear with me. Mayor Taylor, it looks like the YouTube recording is back up, so we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Do we have everybody here?
And just for the record, while we were on that break, I did take another look at Assembly Bill 361, which is our statutory authority to allow us to be meeting remotely tonight, and as long as the Zoom is actually functioning, even if YouTube cuts out, we are actually able to continue with this meeting. So I apologize for that disruption. Thank you for bearing with me.
No problem. Best to be on the up and up. So, okay, at this time, I want to circle back to 8.1 written communication from the public.
And Council, I'll just state that you received several correspondence directly from citizens regarding agenda items tonight, but we have nothing other than that to report.
Okay, thank you. Item nine, item is pulled from the consent calendar. So this brings us to 7.6. Dennis, I'm not hearing you.
I'm used to the Zoom again. I pulled item 7.6 because I was assigned to, after reflecting, seeing the full book of all that after it was published, of the assignments, I saw that I was assigned to the COC. And I, you know, after looking at it, I thought that the COC would be better suited for somebody that would be, be interacting more with the county, possibly in two-by-twos in those situations. So to have full knowledge of all of the information going forward, I feel that homeless is probably going to be on the agenda in discussions with the county. So I thought I'd step down, maintain my position as as a I thought I'd step down, maintain my position as a as a backup. And I, you know, I've already talked to Mayor Taylor about this, so I think that's there's really no, nothing. Going on other than a little switching seats here. And so I wanted to pull that to make that change, or offer to make that change, I guess.
Okay, Michael, how do you feel about being on the COC?
Sure, that's, I can do that. And and just so Dennis and I are kind of flipping on Pioneer as well, which actually. Works really well for me because of the timings. I'm now Chair of the Land Use Committee for SAKOG, which meets essentially at the same time. So when we go back in person, there'd be no way for me to get from Sacramento to Auburn in time for the two meetings, so. This actually works out a lot better for my end as well, just from a, you know, once we were all off the Zoom, so.
Okay, and you know, I would offer to be the alternate on that, Dennis, if you're okay with that, just.
Sure, yeah.
A, you know, kind of stays, okay, so we will, we'll have Michael Saragosa on the. EDOC COC, and I'll be the alternate on that.
Can we ask for public comment, Mayor Taylor?
Okay. Let's open this up to the public.
Public comment is not open for item seven point six. This is the receive and file council member appointments to other agencies and boards. I see no raised hands, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so let's get a motion for this.
I'd move that we adopt seven point six as amended.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. We'll call both of you.
Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember No.
Hi.
Councilmember Thomas.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next item, ten ordinances, we have none. Eleven public hearings, we have none tonight. Which brings us to item twelve, discussion and action items. Twelve point one, consider request by J C S, sorry, J S C R Management, AKA Reserve House, for an extension of the one year deadline to open a cannabis business in the city of Placerville. And Mr. Morris, you have the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On September sixteenth of twenty twenty, the City Council awarded. Three cannabis business license permits to applicants interested in operating cannabis cannabis business in the city of Placerville. At that time, the licenses were awarded to Placerville, California LLC DBA Sacred Roots, Conscious Consulting and Yoga. DBA Chuck's Cannabis Collective and J S C R Management LLC DBA Reserve House. The resolution approving those licenses had a couple of provisions with it. One was. That they were to be open and operating within one year of award of license. And if not, there were three alternates designed that we would contact to step in if they were not able to achieve that. During that time, there were certain things, as this was our first time going through this. Getting ready for the permit, license permit and other things that we needed to do. There were some delays. We set the license permit fee in December. And with all of that going on, we then set a date of January fifteenth. As the starting date of those permits when they could really get going. So that was the date that we set, January fifteenth, twenty twenty one, as the date. They required one year from that date to be open and operating. Two of our cannabis licensees, Chuck's Cannabis Collective, opened on June tenth, twenty twenty one, and Sacred Roots opened on October twenty first. Twenty twenty one, both well within the guideline of the one year. However, the third Sacred Roots, or excuse me, Reserve House was not able to open. We had several meetings with them over the past several months dating back to July and August. Regarding the issue and questions that they had and things that they were trying to do to get going. Recently, we received a letter from Reserve House requesting an extension to that one year limit. To allow them to to move forward, and they gave basically seven reasons for needing this extension or requesting the extension. The first was that when they were, this started in July, or excuse me, January of twenty twenty one. We were still in a lawsuit with some of the applicants that were not accepted. That lawsuit was not settled until mid-June of twenty twenty one. The second was that they, due to the lawsuit, as they stated, they lost their, one of their main investors. And and so they had to find new investors to move forward with the business. Number three, they they cite the concerns with the pandemic. And concerns that they had there. And number, number four, architectural delays, they they cite supply chain issues and et cetera that cause. Delays with their architectural design. Number five, state licensing. Initially, when the first two opened up. They were able to open under a provisional license because the state was granting those at that time. The state is no longer granting provisional licenses. And according to the applicant, I have not confirmed this, but according to the applicant. Licenses now take approximately six to eight months to to be received once they're applied for from the state. Number six, micro license. This particular business is proposed to be a micro business. As opposed to the others that are primarily retail storefronts. The difference is that a micro business has to do at least four cannabis functions. In this case, I believe the four are retail. Growing, manufacturing and distribution. So those four functions under a, in order to operate as a micro business, you have to do at least four functions. That are allowed under cannabis businesses. And and their contention is that it takes longer, even longer for the licensing process to take place. Because of the different provisions that are required for the different fact, functions of growing, distributing, manufacturing, et cetera. Next is building purchase. They they state that they ran into some problems with. Purchasing the the building that they had on site, although they had a letter of intent to purchase. To sell from the from the seller at the time, and that was submitted to us with the original application. They have resubmitted that to us as part of this, a notarized letter of intent to show that they do have access and will be able to buy the building at this time. With that, staff reviewed each of these items and. For the most part, we feel that they had the same opportunity that any of the other businesses had. The other two businesses had, and they were able to work through that and were still able to open despite all of the challenges that we all know we went through over the last year. However, the the one item that staff feels there may be some. Give on in this case is the fact that the lawsuit was going on and that perhaps they lost their investor during that time. They do, under their new plan that they have brought forward to us, have new investors, so I don't doubt that they don't have their old investor and that perhaps they lost them because of the lawsuit. I don't really have a way to confirm that. So because of those two, the lawsuit and perhaps losing their investor because of the lawsuit. Perhaps would be a reason for considering the extension at this time. But the other items, from staff's point of view, were no different than anybody else had to deal with, and therefore. Does, to a certain extent, do not, do not justify an extension. Want to remind you that your ordinance and resolution also states that. The number of cannabis businesses that are allowed is to be. Analyzed on an annual basis. For consideration, we did not do that this first year because, I guess, because it was first year, we really don't know how they're going to do at this point. But it does give you the opportunity on an annual basis to determine. Either to increase or decrease the number of cannabis businesses in the city, so that could be an option to you also. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is also here as an attendee. To address any questions or respond if you would like.
All right, thanks, Cleve. Any questions from the council? Yes, Patty.
Cleve, I was just curious to know through this whole process whether. You have been in touch with these folks, are they with you, and what kind of progress was made during that time? In other words, were you aware of this delay?
Yes, I did have contact with them. As I mentioned, we've met sometimes in July and August. I believe I did express my concerns at those times that we had this one year limit to them. And that, you know, we needed to move forward. It wasn't until about November that we really, you know, I stressed it again and realized, they realized, we both realized that there was no way they were going to meet that January, January fifteenth deadline. And they asked for an extension. I asked them to put that in writing and I would consider it, and that's what brought us to this point.
Yeah. Yes, Dennis.
I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around how much progress they've made on any of these fronts. If they had a whole year to get this building purchased. Had a whole year to, should have had their investors lined up. There should have been things progressing forward. From, from what I'm reading, it doesn't seem like they've. Done much but preparing to commence to proceed, but they haven't actually started.
And and I would agree with that to a certain extent. They have. They have shown me some things in terms of their plans and. New investors, but that's just been over the last about two months.
And plans should have, plans were provided upfront. I mean, that was part of the whole application process.
They were correct.
Okay, all right.
All right, I'm messing with the thermostat in here that he keeps turning off on me. Any other questions? Yes, Michael.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say I had the same concerns that Councilmembers Thomas and Patty brought up in terms of. How far along and things like that. So I just thought maybe we just hear from the applicant, maybe they can. Go over a little bit of that, you know, as we contemplate where we go from here.
Okay, should we invite the applicant to? How is this work over Zoom? Should we promote them to panelist or?
So we can open public comment and we can request the applicant to answer questions first and then obtain additional comments.
Okay. So we'll, sorry, Mona. Well, we'll open public comment for the general public, take all public comment, and then.
You can have the applicant provide responses and a comment before, folks, but we can first open public comment and accept the applicant's response.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, are we opening it up to the, is that the public first or the applicant? I believe Jeremy, is that correctly? Is he the applicant?
Yeah, go go ahead and open up to Jeremy right now, and then we'll see if there's any further public comment after Jeremy.
All right, Jeremy, go ahead. I'm going to allow you to speak now. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Jeremy. Can you hear me?
I can. Hi, Jeremy.
Hello, Mayor, Council. I would like to start off by saying that we have had a few problems and hiccups, but we have have had a lot of progress. As far as we are under contract on the property. We do have new investor who I have with me who is going to comment afterwards. As far as the progress goes, we've pretty much done everything on the second application. Minus getting this extension, and Cleve said he would, you know, allow us to turn in, submit everything. Pay the fee and move forward now that we have, pretty much everything is in order now. All of our architectural drawings have been done, finalized, and they had changed over the two-year, well, over two-year span. That being said, you know, pretty much all the security, everything on the checklist. That we were given as far as the second application, it's all been finalized. We're just waiting for this extension and then pay our fee. Other than that, I do have, as far as the investors went, nobody was willing to really put in, you know. One point seven five million plus on a situation. Where we didn't have the license in hand. The the lawsuit was a major problem. Nobody wanted to put in the the funds whenever the lawsuit basically was to take our license away. So until that verdict was done, nobody really wanted to move forward. Since we have moved forward, we have accomplished almost everything once again, except for this extension. So that we can move forward and we're ready to start build out right now. As we're also ready to open within a year of the court decision, which was June sixteenth. That being said, I have Kevin Hamm, who's our CEO, as well as one of our investors, main investors, and he would like to speak forward.
Yeah, thank you, Jeremy. Yeah, Mayor Council, Kevin Hamm. Yeah, I I think really, I I think to properly level said, it is important to understand that legal challenge was a very big deal. I know I had been approached early on the investment side, and I can tell you that there was nobody at that point. Ready to take that leap while this was in a legal challenge. So I would ask this. Yes, it sounds like the last one just got going three months ago or so. And, you know, what is very different here is that legal challenge that went until mid-June. And so I would look at it at this point until that was done. And as a, and Reserve House did partner to make sure that financially partnering in with the city to make sure that that. That there was that legal support to support the position. So I do want to make that point. So we have been participating along the way. And then I would just ask that really, we look at the one year as starting. When it, this really, the challenge was over in mid-June, and then look at that. After that point. You know, Jeremy did lose his initial investor just because this really wasn't ready to go. Now, things are ready. The property has been secured. The money is ready. And everything is ready to roll now, but everything has been just on hold, waiting to hear this. Extension has been granted, and I think if you all look at it from where are we now? To to really reset and go back to the beginning doesn't seem to make sense to me. Rather than say, okay, we are ready now. There have been challenges. Yeah, I'm sure the others also had the same challenges with. Twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Let's face it, it's been some very unprecedented times. But I would say between that and understanding the legal challenge of being the thing that. Held the investment from being able to be procured as a finalized deal. I would just ask that we look at mid-June as be this being the start of this rather than when the license was not really ready to be issued. At the beginning. So that's all we're asking. We're asking that the clocks start from mid-June rather than from before the time that this really was was a done deal.
The other thing that I would like to add, this is Jeremy Lava again, the other thing that I would like to add is. Doing a micro license, which this is my second one, it's much different than doing a retail only. Retail, yes, you have to put in a few walls, a security door. There's a few things that you have to do, but a micro license, you're building a laboratory. This is much more extensive. It's much more costly. And as far as a timeline goes, it took us two years to finalize our micro license in Sacramento, which was just a three license, a micro license for the city. For us, for the other two applicants to be given the exact same timeline. As a micro license who is going to be doing seven state licenses. That includes cultivation, retail, retail delivery. Edibles, nursery, distribution. There's just no, that's not even, it's not even a comparison. As far as build out. So I do believe that we do deserve an extension based on everything that we're going through is much different than a retail only. And yes, there have been hiccups, but we're ready to go. And I think it would, you guys would be waiting on tax revenue from a backup. Then letting us move forward now that we're ready to go. We have all the paperwork ready to go. Once again, everything is secured as far as the. The the investment money, the purchase of the property. And let's face it, we've gone through a lot to get to where we are today. And to not get the extension and be told no at this point, I just don't feel it's fair. We have put our hearts and souls into this. I've gone through. Uh, we have put our hearts and souls into this. Uh, I've gone through a ton of stress. I've got more gray hair than I'd like to talk about uh, over this situation because this is a dream of ours. Uh, this was the best possible outcome as far as obtaining a micro license of that, of that size. It's never been done before in, in state history and I would like to be given the chance to see it out. Um, and, um, Kevin, do you have anything else to add?
No, I, I think, uh, I think that's.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll open this up to public comment. This is for item 12.1 regarding the extension of the one-year deadline to open a cannabis business in the city. We'll start with Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
I wasn't intending to speak on this and I'm just listening to you because I'm waiting for other items to come up, but and I haven't followed the licensing of all of the, um, the other permits that you've given, but this sounds like a different kind of business. I have no idea what you have been through, through all of this, but, um, it's like comparing apples with oranges about getting the licenses and there are so many smoke shops opening up, opening up in the city of Placerville. I can't understand that and they were one of the original people that applied and got accepted and they've had issues beyond their control. It sounds like a comedy of errors, but I do think that they deserve the benefit of the doubt because they're different than the other two businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, uh, Luwan, I'm sure I'm saying that wrong, go ahead, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I was, um, also not intending to speak on this also, just like the last, um, gal that spoke. Um, but I wanted to pitch in, I'm, I'm also a local business owner and I can relate to the struggles of trying to go through crossing your Ts and dotting your Is within city limits. Um, and I, hearing the gentleman, the two guys speak, I feel that it takes a lot of effort to cross your Ts and dot your Is and to go through all that process and go through all that journey. Um, I feel that they've, they're testifying to the fact that they are willing and ready to go right here, right now. Um, and I, I personally would be happy to support seeing another business, even though it might be a smoke shop. I don't personally smoke, but I have lots of clients and my demographics of my clients is forty-five to seventy-five and that's very common in their age group and we have a very high retirement population that is honestly interested in what they have to offer. Um, I have clients' testimonies telling me that this is something that they're interested in. And so even though it's not my personal interest, I can relate to these folks as another business owner here in town and I would also like to see them be given the benefit of the doubt. They're willing to move forward right here, right now. And I think that we should be in a better position to begin supporting more, um, local businesses that are wanting to grow, um, within our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, I just, you know, to me, I, I don't have a, what do they say, a pony in the race or whatever? I don't, doesn't make any difference to me. It's not something that's of interest to me, but whatever, I mean, as far as the product that they sell. But I was just curious because what kind of liability you're putting yourself at? Because I know there was a lot of applicants and you narrowed it down to three. Now you're giving this one an extension. And what is that going to do for you with the others who may not feel that as equitable? And the other thing, when, when you went out for proposals initially for these shops, and I think you had like ten respondents or something, did these people say they were going to do a micro business with four, seven, whatever aspects to it and how complicated it was, et cetera? Because it seems to me that that's their choice to have that kind of business. They've made it more complicated. And if you weren't asking for that and then now they're using that as a reason for wanting an extension, it also seems like it might put you at a, on a precarious position with the other businesses, the other applicants who are turned down. You, you know this much better than I, uh, it was just some thoughts that ran across my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take, uh, call-in user one, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so the first comment I would make is what does the ordinance say about extensions? Um, appeals, what does the actual law say? Um, if it's okay to ask for an extension, then I guess consider the, uh, situation and I like Ruth's analysis of that. Did they initially apply as a micro business knowing that was going to be much harder? If the gentleman already did a micro business in Sacramento, he, he would have known, I guess, the extra difficulty over a standard business. So first, just what does the ordinance say? Are they allowed an extension? Does it say you get this much time and then it goes to the next person in line? And then a comment would be what will the building look like on the outside? Cause a new smoke shop went in on Broadway, kind of kitty corner from Taco Bell. And they have these storm shutters over the windows, obviously for security. But I'm kind of concerned that that might start looking pretty, for lack of a better term, ghetto. If we're gonna have these businesses for security reasons, putting bars on the windows and these storm roll-down win, uh, screens. Is this a look that is going to be beneficial to us as a whole of the city? Um, other than that, uh, that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call for item 12.1. Annie Aubrey, go ahead.
Hi, Council, Annie Aubrey. I sent an email, so I won't spend the time rereading the whole thing, but I basically presented that when we wrote the ordinance several years ago, the demographics of the city and saturation levels were unknown. Fast forward to now and it looks very different. Where we once only had a few medicinal operation, the local consumer now has several delivery options. Six dispensaries serving the region and seven more in the application process with the county. The access to cannabis has drastically and quickly changed. As mentioned, there's no line at any retail store in the area and often you will see the buildings and parking lots empty of consumers. We operate on small margins, have high fees, high taxes, no write-offs and a lot of overhead. Another retail store would be detrimental to us and not in high enough demand makes sense. I therefore urge you to vote no on option three, which is to give a license to the first alternative winner. I would also like to remind you that the proposal, business location, composition of partnerships was a critical component of the city manager's recommendation on who was selected. Taking on new partners, meeting a new building location like the runners-up will likely have to face. And other factors essentially mean that the city is extending an opportunity to affirm in partnership that could be very different than what was considered initially. Since we just went through a lengthy lawsuit, both Kelly and I are nervous and worried. We could be setting the stage for another lengthy process and we'd like to ask that we not be financially responsible for the outcome of any decisions made today. Sorry, I'm at work. By, um, any decisions made by council that puts us in the same position as before. Um, as Cleve mentioned, the ordinance states that the city council, in their discretion after a year, can at any time determine that the number of commercial cannabis permits should stay the same, decrease, or be expanded. Which leads me to urge you to option, to vote I on option four, which is other options at council's discretion. And I suggest a reduction in the number of permits from three to the two current permits. Who met the timeline, had the same obstacles and are now in need of the council's support to stay sustainable and healthy. It's a hot topic in the news that our industry is struggling statewide to survive and we are no exception here in Placerville. I suggest that it is in the city's best interest to see our two licenses succeed and that we have indeed earned a chance at long-term success because we are the only two businesses that met the city's criteria for opening. I appreciate your time and all your hard work on this topic. Over all these years, we've walked this journey together. I ask for your consideration and another option to confront the actual market today, reduce the rapid increase of saturation we may be facing as more operations continue to open. If you have any questions, concerns, or interests, um, my door is always open. I'm happy to accommodate. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you.
We'll take public comment from Sue Rodman, go ahead.
I think I would agree with the last speaker that the two that we have already operating, I very rarely see anyone there when I go past. And if they're struggling to make it, I, it's sort of like the antique stores on Main Street, you can only support so many of the same type of businesses and then somebody has to go broke. And this, this new, this person, if they applied for a micro business license and they already had one in Sacramento, then they did know what they were getting into. So now they want an extension. Uh, I'm not sure that that's, that's a good idea. I think I would vote no. That's my comment.
Thank you, Sue.
Madam Mayor, I see no other comments. Would you have Jeremy with his hand raised again?
Um, well, let's bring it back to council and if we have additional questions that come up, Cleve and Mona, we can then ask those of Jeremy, correct? Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll do that. We'll, we'll bring it back to council for a little bit of discussion first. Um, alright, Council. What do you think?
I have a question of, question of Cleve, when did we get the letter asking for, um, the extension? I didn't see the, on the letter that was attached. I didn't see the, the time on it.
There was not a date on the letter, you're correct. Um, I wanna say it was early, early January or end of December.
Okay, so essentially when the time ran out, we got a letter asking for an extension. Not like, so it wasn't necessarily very proactive.
When, when we talked in November, um, did note that if you wanted the extension, they needed to give me something in writing. I did get an email basically saying we are requesting an extension. And that was it. And I, I later said, I need some more detail. Why do you need an extension? What, you know, and so that's when the later letter came back. Uh, I, I could go back and check, early January, late, um, late, late December, so.
Got you. And in the, under the current, what's been at, at least laid out to us both verbally and in writing, how different is that from what was originally reviewed by the committee? Um, and, and the city council, or at least some of the members on the city council that were on at the time? Is it?
They, they, from the very beginning proposed a micro business, so that's not a change at all. Um, they, they have discussed with me, I don't have details, they have discussed me, discussed with me, um, an option that would present a, a different ma- matter, manner of, of the cultivation. Um, and I would ask you to ask them about that if you would like to. But other than that, the building is the same, new investor, as I mentioned. Um, the two original partners are still the same. Um, and again, like I say, the, the building and basic layout, I don't think has changed significantly. Um, but, but you could ask that of Jeremy, he could answer that better than I can.
Thank you.
Any other, um, yes, Jackie?
Yeah, is kind of more, um, a question, I wasn't on the council at the time that you did this, but am I remembering correctly that the city kind of approved three times the amount that was actually recommended for our population? And I guess I'm, where I'm going with this is I'm just wondering, um, now that we have more time to reflect, now that we have two dispensaries open, do we want to reconsider if there really is the market for a third dispensary or not? And certainly I could understand the strategy, you know, getting open before the county and being first and being the prominent businesses, but since that's all kind of changed, um, I'd just like to kind of reopen that discussion. Should we just have two? We can always add one later. I know we can always subtract one, but I think that's always terrible to take someone's business license away. Um, maybe we carefully consider that now. Thank you.
Any thoughts on that?
May, maybe I can respond to that. I think I mentioned to a couple of you when I've talked to you that uh, HDL, who has been our consultant on this, uh, when I was, when we were discussing how many to license, I asked them the question of, you know, what is, what is the, is there a general rule or a proper rule? And they did say that generally about one, one retail dispensary per 10,000 population was a kind of a general rule that they, they followed.
I, I will say, um, back, so when this, uh, item came up, I was, I think it was my, maybe my first or second meeting on, on city council, but at the time I, I did put a, a proposal forward, um, that was seconded by then Mayor Wendy Thomas to only do two dispensaries. So we didn't know exactly what the market was gonna be. This is obviously all pre-pandemic anyways, but that, that would have been a, a course to, um, kind of ascertain where we were gonna go, uh, with all this to begin with. And now we've seen kind of where we've gone several years later now. Um, I've seen the same thing. I mean, I, I don't see lines out the door at, at any of these locations, uh, for people wanting to buy cannabis. Um, I would be very open to, uh, to licenses for now. It's not as if we couldn't uh, look at this again at any later time, um, for a third license.
Patty?
Um, you know, I, I don't know, I, I'd really kind of like to get Mona's opinion on this, but, um, when, when this was all proposed and this particular business was issued, uh, the right to, uh, you know, to have his shop. I'm not sure that, I think, and I'm coming from a business person's point of view. Uh, I think it was, it would not be fair, I'll use that word, to deny him that possibility of having a third and because of the fact that we did know that his business was gonna be entirely different, well, half, uh, than the other two, um, I think we felt as though that was a consideration in establishing that third, uh, type business, cause it was so different from the other two. And, um, I'm also going to tell you that many, many years ago, um, and when the recession hit and we, husband and I were going through a period of trying to save our business and it was due to the recession. Um, it was, it had to do with loans, et cetera. So I know what these folks are going through and I, I, I really do have, um, a tender spot in my heart for that because it was no fault of ours, just as they're, you know, telling us, um, you almost get to the point where you're so desperate, you, you're just, you know, um, pulling at anything to try to solve the situation and save your, um, your business and everything. So, but I, I don't, I really, uh, I'm not at all for disqualifying them, uh, uh, or disqualifying a third business just because we don't think the other two, um, are panning out. Um, and I also think that these businesses have opened during this really, uh, this pandemic and I'm not too sure that they've had, um, you know, it's been, um, smooth sailing because of the pandemic. I don't know whether that has anything to do with their product. Um, you know, like I say, uh, but I'm not for denying that this person his chance to make it on the basis that the other two are maybe, you know, their businesses are dwindling or, or less than, than what they expected.
Okay. Thank you, Patty. Dennis, do you want to say something?
Sure. I, I'm struggling with, with this from two different perspectives, from, you know, a small business trying to make a go of it. As well as, um, you know, two people, two other businesses that. You know, two people, two other businesses that did make a go of it, they risked. They, they put the risk out to. On the, on the bet that things are gonna go through and that, um. That, uh. That the lawsuit was, you know, exactly what it was. It was a big nothing burger and it was essentially thrown out. And they succeeded. And they, they put the effort, they put the risk in and they did it. These guys. You know, their investors kind of hit the road from what it sounds like and didn't wanna, didn't wanna, you know, put the risk out. And so he had to, you know, sit on the sidelines and, and watch all this happen while the others were making it happen. And now that it's a safe place. That he wants to take advantage of it and, uh, ask for an extension and. And, you know, go ahead and have the same benefit that everybody else did, that they put it forward and. Uh, you know, and, and we had, we, we, we were clear one year. Bring it forward and these other people, they got it done. They got over the finish line. They started before the lawsuit was settled in July. June. Um, had this person started in June. You know, when was the, when did the first one open? They opened in August.
Before that, actually, let me, let me get the date here. I've got it in my report.
It was April.
Uh, June 10th.
Okay, so they opened, so, um, they opened on June 10th.
Correct.
Six months from the go date. Now, the, the, the settlement was done in. June also.
Correct.
Had they said, okay, we're ready to go, we're gonna hit the ground running, they should be about ready to. To, um. To open their doors. And yet here we are. They, they have, they don't have a building purchase, they don't have any of that. And I, I think it's disingenuous to. To put the, to put this forward in such a way that. That, uh, you know, yeah, you guys worked really hard, you got it done. The other guys, they waited till the last minute and now we're, now we're starting almost from, from zero. Because this is exactly the starting point of the other ones. They, they actually bought their buildings ahead of time. Taking that risk as well. They, they had everything ready to go when, when, when we, when, when the, uh. Process was done and they were awarded. It just seems, it seems disingenuous at this point. Not disingenuous cuz I, I know these people are working hard, they're trying to get it, they're trying to get their investors together. But, and I don't wanna characterize them as disingenuous. I, I just look at it as. You know, we, we set up, but we set up guidelines and other people were done way ahead of time. And, and, and this is not there.
Cleve, in terms of the lawsuit and. I'm going off of memory, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that only Reserve House was at risk of. Losing that license and the other two were not. At risk of losing the license?
Um, not, not necessarily. There were options that the judge had, he could have thrown the whole thing out. There were, there were some questions, maybe a little bit more with Reserve House because of the appeal process, but also. Chuck's also was granted an appeal process during that time, so.
Okay.
Early on, anyway, in the process.
So that wouldn't justify a reason for them to kind of wait to see before getting started like the other two?
Even, even if they waited, it started in June. Theoretically, they should be half, two thirds, 75% of the way over the finish line, to the finish line.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, I, I feel the same, feel the same way. I mean, I, I, I think. You know, if this was me and I waited till my investors were on the fence and June came and it was sort of cleared up at that point. You know, I'm moving like heaven and earth to try to get everything in place. Even if I don't get it all in place, I'm showing the city, I've got these new investors lined up, here's where I'm at with, with the building. Um, you know, this is kind of where we're going from here. Here's the time I'm gonna need. But unfortunately, we didn't get any of that until basically the clock ran out. And then we got a letter saying, by the way, you know, we wanna do all this and we're gonna get it all done in six months. Even though now we know licensing can take a lot longer than that going forward as well. So I don't necessarily have any. Confidence that even in six months that we won't be back here again in six months, asking for another six months extension. Because the timing just didn't pan out, uh, in terms of getting financing, other things in place and licensing, so. I'm leaning towards just a, a no without a, you know, doing any other type of, um, of, uh, extensions.
Patty?
Well, I think it all boils down to this investor question. Uh, did he, did, did he get another investor by June? When, when did this new investor step into the picture? Cuz I, it sounds to me like everything was pending, but he just didn't have the money. I mean, to take, you know, the chance on buying the building and it's, and I know the other folks bought their building, but. Again, I, I'm just looking at it from that this is a whole different thing and he, he had a, maybe a bigger investment, uh, than the other folks did. I don't know, but that's a question maybe we can ask him when this, when the other investor came into the picture.
Okay. Um, I've got a question for our city attorney. You know, looking at the ordinance, um, in the part quoted in the staff report, um, from the resolution. We have the authority to grant this extension?
Um, so. The city has, um, adopted an ordinance and a resolution addressing cannabis business licenses. The ordinance is codified in chapter 5.28 and it makes two things clear. First of all, this cap that we're talking about, the three cap, uh, it clearly states in our ordinance that at any time. Number one, that's a maximum and the council could make the decision to issue fewer than those, those. Number two, that there's a 12 month, uh, duration for permits. And the exception to that 12 month, um, expiring and, and terminating. Is if the applicant seeks an extension at least 60 days before. And so from my perspective. The council's only authority for allowing an extension is to interpret. The granting of this, um, license that occurred in January of 2021 is having been told. Until settlement of the lawsuit, at which point it continued. So I would, I would say that the council either agrees to allow an extension finding that. The permit was told until June 2021, at which time the lawsuit, um, was dismissed. Or that it finds that the applicant did not timely, um, request an extension and deny it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um. I, I have, yeah, go ahead.
I, I'm, I've lost my dates on my paper, but was it a timely request?
It was not within the 60 days defined by the, uh, city attorney.
And, and defined by our ordinance. Okay.
So I've got, I've got a couple of comments on this, um, and then we can. Ask our, our questions of the applicants. Um, I was on the cannabis committee and. I can say, you know. One, one of the strengths of this applica- application was that it was a micro business. So it kind of differed diversified, um, revenue generating activity. It was the, um, you know, it was the thinking of the committee that. It would take away less from other retail establishments because they would be making revenue with manufacturing and through other means. Um, so that was one, one thing that we saw as a strength of this application. Um. Yeah, I gotta say, I'm really, really torn on this because this applicant has no doubt invested time and energy. The application process was incredibly rigorous. There's been, you know, steps taken, the lawsuit was expensive for all, um, you know, and, and the thought of. Pulling something away that has been granted, um, because of hardship, you know, pulling something away because they weren't able to meet a deadline. I just, I don't take that lightly. That is really, weighs really heavy on me. At the same time, the application process was incredibly rigorous, um, for all that applied. And it was a, a really litigious process as we've seen. And I also really have a hard time, um, kind of deviating from. The process that was laid out in our ordinance. So, I don't know, I just wanted to get those thoughts out there. It's, this is really, is really tough, tough one. Yes, Michael.
Question for, for Mona, oh, question for Mona. Would you say, I mean, not necessarily in, in other cities that you've worked in, but certainly. In the municipal sphere that, that you operate in as well, are, is litigation common when it comes to cannabis licensing?
Um, I know that it's a very, it's a very competitive, um, process. Because most cities that do allow them, regulate them and establish caps. So I do know that in my experience, the application process, again, extremely competitive. I haven't seen, um, litigation as much on cannabis as other types of projects. But I have seen, um, that when litigation ensues over a project that it can, um. Render it in feasible because all of the financial resources that were initially intended to go towards operating and opening the business. Are now diverted and used for defense of the lawsuit.
Got you. I'll, and I'll rephrase my question. Is litigation, would litigation be, um. Would litigation be, um, that's what I'm looking for, um. Would, would this be out of, out of step with what other areas have gone through? In other words, I mean, would this be an expectation potentially that you would face litigation in this, in a process like this?
I think it's definitely possible. I think anytime that, um, a municipality establishes caps. That there are, um, competitors, there are opponents who, for whatever reason, pecuniary or otherwise, come and challenge it. Because it, um, you know, benefits them.
Thank you. And I, and I just, I'm gonna, I mean, I, I've gone through a ton of RFPs when it comes to, you know, bidding on projects. For both public and quasi-public, um, contracts. And as, as Mona, uh, just mentioned, you know, when there's a limit on who, or say there's just one, uh, like a, a master. Like for my case, a master contract for some kind of public relations services, uh, for a municipality or for the state or something like that. There are sometimes litigation because of scoring or other items. This is what happened in our case. And when you go into those types of RFP processes, you generally accept that you may find yourself in that situation. So I don't think it's out of the norm to be ready for a potential litigious situation. Uh, and you have to kind of bake that into your business plan as you move forward. So I, I'm not sure I buy the argument that litigation kind of threw everything off. Because to me, it's just a necessary, you know, something that you take into consideration as a business person, as someone going into a contract process. Uh, where there is a finite amount of licenses, that that might end up being part of what you have to look into or prepare for as you move forward. Uh, so I just wanted to put that on the record as well. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or should we, um, invite the applicants up to? Have some questions answered? Okay, let's, let's bring Jeremy back.
Jeremy, go ahead.
Hi, Jeremy.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thanks.
Yes, um, I would like, go ahead.
Well, I just, I wanted to get started with a couple of questions for you. Has the business model changed from what was originally in the application?
It has. Uh, we expanded cultivation, uh, as well as our edibles. The buildout, we went all the way up to 400 lights. I don't know if anyone's aware, but on that property, there is a creek running underneath it. And when, uh, the original plans had changed significantly because you can't build over that, uh, over that creek. Uh, it, for environmental reasons. So we had to basically adjust, uh, warehouse, which would be on the east side of the property. And, uh, so yes, the architectural designs had to change dramatically. And, uh, uh, regardless, uh, and I understand we applied as a micro license. But whether it was cannabis or non-cannabis, it would take up to two to three years, according to other builders that I've spoken to. To accomplish any type of build out, especially with where we are right now with COVID. You can, it's hard to get a contractor, contractors are slammed because they are understaffed. And, uh, it's a supply chain issue. So regardless of cannabis, in order to build the warehouse that I want on the east side. That will be attached to the original building, that is too small to do the micro that we proposed and that we won with. Uh, we have to build a larger warehouse on the east side, which is doable. And, uh, that would take years regardless of cannabis.
Okay, another question. Can you, um, can you state? Approximately what percentage of your revenues will be coming from retail versus manufacturing and other, um, revenue streams?
I actually can. Uh, three quarters of our business will not be retail. Uh, if you give, uh, once we are fully built out, we will be doing around 15 to 20 million dollars gross. You could put all the other applicant retails together and they couldn't even come close to half of what we will be doing in revenue. And that's revenue that's taxed and given to the city. Uh, our distribution license alone with the team that I've put together of what we are already doing statewide. Will be able to beat the other two's tax revenue combined, I would say by probably a thousand percent. So tax revenue is the purpose of this. We are going to be giving a large, uh, amount of tax revenue. And the fact of the matter is, is as far as the retail goes, this is a country of free enterprise. I understand they don't want a third. Kelly has two though, if we're really gonna go with. Kelly has another one on the outside, on the outskirts of town. So, I mean, uh, none, another retail, retail isn't our, isn't really what we're going after as much as the factory. We're going to be having, the employee, the employment alone will be giant for the city. The taxation alone of the factory, not the retail, the factory part, which is why we won in the first place. All I'm asking is that we are allowed to do the factory and anybody who knows anything about building commercial warehousing. Understands that it, it's timely. It's not something that you can just throw a few display cases in, put your product in, boom, you're retail. Retail isn't that difficult to put together. The factory is. And I understand that we were given a year, but we were gonna do everything in phases and we applied with a phase. We were gonna do phase one, phase two, phase three.
Saying on doing phases or is it?
We will, we have to do a phase to open in time, but it is doable for us to open.
So what is, what, what is the timeline for getting all three phases, you know, for being up and running completely?
For phase one, we, we think we can, uh, accomplish that in the next six to seven months. But however, let's not forget, the first two got their state licensing with a provisional. The state stopped doing provisionals over, over a year ago. We are having to apply, uh, traditionally without a provisional, which takes longer. Uh, did we start later? No, we did not start later. Uh, and we did have our investor before, our new investor we had before the lawsuit. And so we have been moving forward. It's just, it's a timely thing. Getting our architect, uh, was, was, yes.
How long will it take to get the, all three phases done?
Uh, that's gonna take, uh, originally in our application, uh, we said over two to three years for the entire build out. Because once again, you're building laboratories.
And for phase one, what, what does that entail?
Phase one entails the retail, retail storefront, retail delivery. Distribution, manufacturing type one, which is an infusion license. as well as a nursery and cultivation. It'll actually be five full licenses in the original three thousand square foot building.
Okay. Have you started the state application for our licensing?
Our state applications are starting as soon as we get the extension. Uh, as far as state licensing goes, we have to have our architectural design completed without the proper amount of money, knowing that we needed to, to, to succeed in that project, which we now have, we can move forward. Uh, but you can't, uh, you, without knowing how much money you have, you can't do a, a design. Uh, because all of that is timely. You have to have bids on supplies, uh, build out, construction, labor. Uh, we have all of that, that is all done now and ready to go.
Okay, so you have all the money in the bank needed to pay the lawsuit, pay the licenses, purchase the property and do the buildout. It's all in the bank, ready to go.
Where you, we are already in process.
So it's all in the bank? You've got, you're fully funded for this project?
We are, yeah, literally this is what is holding, uh, holding, holding this up. The last straw is, hey, this, you know, the extension needs to be done. First, the lawsuit needed to be finalized. That uh was uh giving Jeremy the ability to procure the money needed for the plan. And I do know this, uh, I, I, I know that uh, I personally, and I'm sorry, this is Kevin Ham. I know I was asked to attend a meeting uh about the extension and about the fact that, yes, we're here now, ready to step up and do this. We just need to make sure that, that this will extend beyond January. And that meeting was, uh, just looking at my calendar on November third. So that was definitely at that point, this uh has been a discussion that definitely there would need to be extra time. I believe at that point, uh, Jeremy was asked to turn in something more formal. There'd been an informal request sent in saying that more time was needed. So this is well before the sixty days or whatever, uh, that, uh, the initial, uh, the, the timeline. So it wasn't like uh, time ran out and now everybody's asking for more time. So it was just, hey, until that extension is actually granted, we can't actually uh say here the purchase, the property is going to be purchased because quite frankly, that property is not worth the purchase price unless this project goes through. So I think, I think Jeremy was well aware that, uh, yes, one year was, was the right timeframe uh to get through uh the initial phase, initial phase of this. Uh, but he couldn't start that because of the lawsuit. So what we're really asking is just exactly what you're saying. At the time that lawsuit was uh, was settled, that was when everybody said, okay, get the extension and everything's ready to go. So everybody's been lined up assuming that this extension is going to be granted. And then at that point, uh, we're, we're ready to roll and get the phase one done. And yes, is the timeline even tighter? Because uh, we didn't have an extension right at the time the lawsuit was filed in June. Uh, yeah, I think it was uh when money started uh lining in, in October, that it was like, wait a second. Uh, if this doesn't extend beyond January, the timeline is way too tight to make that financial commitment. So I, I, I know we, we've gotten sideways on the other two and the other two, and somebody said this, this is apples and oranges. It absolutely is. And uh, you know, it wasn't like uh Jeremy could have been ready for uh the challenges that we're going to be facing here on the legal side. And from the time that was settled, the next phase was get the extension, good to go. So, you know, now timeline is even tighter if we go back to June, but that's all still very doable. Just so long as the extension is uh granted at this point. And I, I just really think given all the circumstances on, on this, that's just the, it's the right thing to do. And it's the best thing on behalf of the city. This is a very, very different thing than just a retail storefront or just another. There's a reason that this was done. This license is unprecedented. The scope of the project is very different. And I think it's going to make a very uh, it's going to make Placerville uh, uh, really a nice showpiece for what a really solidly run operation can look like.
And uh, I've looked at our application. Uh, in our application, I did state that the three phases would take multiple years. And we won with that application. So it was well aware that there would be a timeline to finish all phases that took over two years.
Are there any other questions from the council?
Just, you said that Cleve told you on November third to put something in writing for the extension. And it sounds to me like it took you another six to eight weeks to ask for that extension. I'm just wondering why that took so long.
Well, the reason why it took so long is there is a second application. Uh, all of that has to do with uh our architectural design. Uh, so once we finished all of our architectural drawings, we had to get security for that. Uh, the security company couldn't come in for that second application checklist for us to finish uh everything uh until the architectural design was done. We are using a local architect, Jim Malt. Uh, Pierre works within quite often. Uh, and uh, we are sticking to our guns like we promised the city, using local enterprises. Uh, we're trying to use all local builders, uh, local employers, uh, anything that we can local, we're sticking to our promise. So it did take a few extra weeks and that was due to the fact that when we found out that we were not going to be able to build on the west side of the property, we were gonna have to turn that into our parking lot area. And then our actual factory was to be built on the east side. That did change things dramatically. Yes.
Jackie, did that answer your question?
Not at all. Okay.
Not at all? Okay.
I mean, he, he told you November third to write a letter. Why didn't you on November fourth, write that letter and ask for the extension?
I actually had an email that I did send in uh afterwards. Uh, but I couldn't do the full extension uh as far as uh the criteria on the second application until I had the security company finalize their plans because that's what Cleve had asked for.
So I think the point is a request was certainly made. In fact, the request was made even ahead of that November third meeting. There was a, an informal request. What the, we're talking about is when the request was being asked to be in a certain form with the application, with all the other things. Now there's new requirements that had to be met in order to make that the official uh document that was being looked for.
Cleve wanted to see progress. And in order for me to show all of the progress, I had to have all those plans finalized.
So you weren't really ready to go then?
We were ready with everything except for the security company. And I, I, the security company, there's only so many security companies that'll work with cannabis. Uh, the one that we're using is used by Cookies Connected. All of the larger uh companies use the security company. They're based out of Rancho Cordova. And uh, they're who we want to go with or who we use in Sacramento. I wanted to extend that. And uh, it was a timeline based on COVID as well. I can't uh, getting individuals right now as far as plumbers, elect, you know, uh, electrical engineers. It's difficult to get anybody to do anything in a timely manner right now, but we are going as fast as we can. Uh, in no form or fashion am I putting this as my uh, it's second to anything. But I can only move as fast as, you know, I'm allowed. Uh, I, I can't exactly make individuals show up on, you know, two days and then two days later. So time has been a problem due to COVID. Uh, it just has. And it's been that way for everybody, not just cannabis industry. That goes for every business in the city of Placerville. COVID has affected all of us. And it has affected us as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you have any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, Jeremy and Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, counsel. Discussion.
But I'm still at the same position. I, I've never been a big believer in the dog ate my homework. Um, and lots of other sundries of excuses for not actually communicating with the city on a timely basis um and understanding kind of where uh, where they were in all this until the very last minute. Um, and it's still, I mean, there's sort of a litany of excuses throughout all of this um in the answers right now. Um, so I would make a proposal to um reject the uh extension.
Motion or?
My motion to reject the extension.
I'll second that motion.
I
Yes, Patty.
I still feel strongly that um, like I say, having been through pretty close to almost the same thing. Um, I can, I can sympathize with this man and um, I'm not willing to dismiss it. I would like to see an extension given, but I would also like to see the city really, um, if, i- it's gonna require, I guess, another signed agreement with them. But I want some really stringent benchmarks, um, you know, as far as time goes. And, you know, after the six month period is up, it's absolutely, if, if they haven't adhered to it, I don't care. They can, they can every day forward their progression of progress. Um, but if we still require it so that we know that they are really doing due diligence, and that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, so your, your proposal would be to grant the extension with a very stringent timeline and benchmarks. And if they meet, if they fail to meet a single one of those, then the extension is maybe it didn't come back to the council.
No more extensions.
Okay.
I, 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 I think on July one, they, they would have known where they're at and where they're going and what the expectation was, given the industry, all the knowledge that's out there and preparedness that you don't, you'd know either you're gonna start construction July one or you're gonna wait until January one and roll the dice to see because, or December one. But uh, to me, January, I mean, July one would, you would know. They, i- if you were fully invested and know what's going on July one, you would know. And you would have all your ducks in a row, having a license and having the ability to, to have that opportunity. And it was the same opportunity we gave everybody else.
So
Yes.
So Kara, I'm gonna ask you, you were on the committee that, you know, making the choices. Um, were, was this the only um, the only one that, that had the uh, the micro attached to it?
No, I believe, I believe that there were a couple other micro applicants. This is going by memory. It's been quite a while at this point, but um, I do believe that there were maybe two other.
I, I quite frankly think that that needs to be considered um as he's expressed, and I think you did too. Uh, as adding to the uh economy of our city, which as you all know, we're in badly in need of. So if, if he could show and this could be done, um, it sounds like um.
We're, we're, we're still talking in phases though. This is phase one. This isn't getting the whole thing done. So, you know, all the, all the labs and everything else are still something else.
Well, they have to start somewhere. I mean, if that's what it takes.
July one.
Oh, I just, I mean, I hear that they say they're gonna be open by July one, but I don't know how they're gonna have any less problems with supply chains and contractors and everything they had up to this point. I don't, I don't see how we're not gonna have the same conversation six months from now. All right.
Well, I think we have a rule. I think we have the, you know, policy that we set forth and here we are trying to figure that out.
Um. Okay, unless there's further comments, I'm, I am still incredibly torn about this, but I do kind of think I may be leaning towards Patty's um persuasion, but we, unless there's further comments on this, we, yes.
Would it, would it help and maybe this, uh, uh, and maybe it's not allowed to have Pierre comment on, I mean, he's done a lot, you know, he's the head, the person that we go to, to create a new business, et cetera. Um, and get his take on it. Would that be permissible?
Sure, I would, I would love to hear from Pierre. If he has anything to.
Um, I don't really have anything to add that I think would uh, you know, provide the council any further ability to make a decision. It seems, it seems I would rely more heavily on our ordinance and whether or not the applicant has met uh the burden of proof of meeting the deadlines as prescribed in our ordinance. Um, that's about all, all I can give.
Have you run across this? I mean, is, is it a detriment, is the, has the COVID been a detriment to other businesses? You know, complete, or even, I, I guess it would go to the housing, getting contractors, et cetera, as this gentleman alludes to.
No, I would think that's certainly true. COVID has certainly uh caused a lot of disruptions in construction projects. Um, I know that contractors are in sorts, short supply. A lot of that has to do with um COVID. And a lot of it has to do with just the focus of when, when there was basically a shutdown in travel. I think we saw a huge increase in development activity uh with people basically focusing in on their home or focusing in on their business. We saw a lot of um improvements, both to commercial and residential development, uh, making the contractors out there very, very busy and in short supply. I mean, I've, we've, we've heard that um in, in our, in our department now for the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you, Pierre.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have a first and a second. So let's, let's see where this goes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the motion on the table is to um reject the extension. Um, we will start with Mayor Taylor.
I have a question on that motion. Michael, was your motion to continue to the next contractor or to just have two um dispensaries for now?
Yeah, it's just to have two dispensaries. It's not to move on to another one. It's just to leave it at two.
I, I don't know that that's, that's a decision. We'd have to make it another council. I think.
That's true. I would agree, totally agree Dennis. I think it's just, this is just on the license itself. Uh, yeah, but we can have, we can talk about micro.
Uh, yes, thank you. As a point of clarification, the resolution that previously approved this permit specifically states that in the event that the business does not start within twelve months and that permit is not extended, then the other businesses are deemed eligible for purposes of being issued a permit. So they are not automatically presumed to have the rights. They're just eligible to then apply and then there's a priority. So tonight's motion would be whether or not the extension for this particular business is awarded. And then at some point in the future, we'll address um uh, Canatopia, CN Holdings, and three Habitat Consulting.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Can, can I add to that, Mona? That also I believe the council could take action if, if you feel this is the direction you want to go to direct staff to bring back the review of the number of uh cannabis businesses allowed that is allowed by resolution for you to review on an annual basis.
You can absolutely do that. You can direct staff, you know, until further notice. We have no interest in reviewing these kind of permits. You it's, it's completely within your discretion. But again, for tonight's purpose, it's just whether you wish to extend this applicant's.
So I would hold to my original um resolution then.
Motion.
My original motion. Thank you, Patty.
Do we need it restated? We know what that is.
Just to deny the, the extension.
Okay.
Okay, real call vote.
Hmm.
Mayor, uh, Mayor Taylor.
No.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Borelli?
No.
Councilmember No?
Hi.
Councilmember Thomas?
Hi.
All right, thank you Regina. Um. You need to take a five minute break. Five, okay. We will uh take a brief recess and be back in five minutes. All right, wel- welcome back everyone. Um, we, I did get a request to announce the outcome of the vote clearly. So Regina, if you would like to do that. So Regina, if you would like to do that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, the vote was to, to approve the rejection of the extension. I probably didn't word that very well, but three, two, to approve. The rejection of the extension for Reserve House.
The council, the council rejected the extension of a permit by a three, two vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 12.2, adopt a resolution directing the community services department to administer the seven approved downtown special events. That warrant Main Street closures and two, to authorize staff to implement revisions to the special event processes and protocols. To provide overall administration of the event and provide some cost recovery where possible. And three, authorizing staff to engage nonprofits for the cosponsorship and coordination of certain special events. To provide improved continuity in the future. Mr. Zeller.
I thank you, Mayor Taylor. Can everyone hear me? Great, okay. Again, this is Terry Zeller, Director of Community Services. And the staff report that you have before you for item 12.2 does have the three parts that Mayor Taylor went over. And I'll try to go over those as best I can in my comments. So the focus really is to set new policy and procedures for the city to sponsor and be responsible for. The main portions of the event that affect the public, which is the public safety, the insurance. Making sure that the preparation and the setup of the venue is. Is orderly and organized and also control the proceeds and the operation of the seven downtown events. And we're talking about the seven Main Street closures. And the goals really are of having a greater control of the Main Street events, operation, the content and the safety. Including doing a better job of including and responding to the downtown businesses. I want to point out, at this point, staff is seeking approval of the general concept at this point. And we are working on that. It's a work in progress, but it is to be fleshed out in a February meeting for specific approval. So I just wanted to let you know, this is a, we're pitching the concept now. And hopefully we'll get some good input from the council and from the public and be able to move on to a comprehensive. Set of specifics for February meeting. So for a little bit of history. I want to go back to February of 2020, and that was when a staff report was first put together, talking about the special events. And that was the staff report and the time where we had started to discuss seriously about. Limiting the number of events that were happening that involved road closure, Main Street road closure. And at the time, I think it was in 2019, we had 12 events altogether and we'd have as many as 14 in years past. That had been requested from different sponsors and approved. And so the goal of limiting those events, as you remember, was to try to balance the disruption of the street closures. With the benefit that the events provided for, for our quality of life and, and the community. And the council did approve the recommendations. And you can see the, the events that I've listed out in bullet points there. And that would be the, the seven events were Hangtown Days in June and the classic car show in Widerlust in August. As we know, Widerlust did not happen last year, but it was on the approved list in 2020. And then Oktoberfest in September. And then the Trick or Treat on Main Street, Festival of Lights, which are already both city sponsored events and the Christmas Parade in December. And so in that report also, staff was looking for the approval of proposed fees. And also this was to try to balance and give a little bit of uniformity to the costs, which have been all over the place for many years. And so the request was for fees for setting up and taking down barricades, for using the city vehicles as barricades. As we know, I've discussed in the past, how the home net security requirements for protecting pedestrians. Require that we have substantial barricades to stop vehicular access to where pedestrians are. And also electrical use and then pre and post event street sweeping, which does incur costs and puts, puts our guys. Out doing work that they otherwise wouldn't be doing. So just as a review, the council did not approve those fees in that February staff report. But did approve the event list and then asked for staff to return with an updated application procedures and fees. And as we know, the COVID-19 happened and so we didn't do a follow up on putting together an entire new process. But we did follow up with a staff report in April of 2021, this past April, to set a fee for the seven Main Street closure events. And I had anticipated around a $1,200 basic cost and it was itemized. And the council, in order to try to do some cost recovery, went ahead and did a vote on. Charging a thousand dollars to those seven events with the ability for a $500 waiver for events that were not revenue generators. And so that format was used this, this past year for the events that took place on Main Street. Also included in your packet, and this was very recently, was a survey that was done by the Plasterville Economic Advisory Committee. They put a lot of time and focused a lot of their meeting agenda on trying to get. A good comprehensive survey of the downtown businesses to gauge their support, in part for special events as well as other things. But we did get a lot of feedback on those events and the results of their survey are included in the attachments to the staff report. The interesting portion, kind of the meat of the, of the interest for me was to see exactly what. Businesses considered to be the most beneficial of the seven events that we have held on to for Main Street closures. And so that list is in descending order for you there and show, so you can see Festival of Lights and Trick or Treat. Were at the top of the list. And then Christmas Parade, Oktoberfest, Hangtown Days, Widerlust. And then the Car Show, the August Car Show. And so, and it's worth noting that the two events with the highest perceived benefit in the peak survey of the 32 respondents. That were all downtown businesses. The two highest were current, our current city sponsored events out of those seven. So the survey also had the provision for subjective responses and I would say that there's a lot of information and it's. It would be good for some further review after we chat, but before the February meeting to kind of delve into that. A lot of good work was done and we really appreciated what the Economic Advisory Committee did for, on behalf of those events. So getting back to the staff, we've had discussions about Main Street closure events for some time. And even back in 2020, we had talked about restructuring the entire way that they're brought to the public. And what would be the most ideal for the community in terms of the, the event responsibility. And making sure that we have everything in place for safety and other measures. Just to remind the council, currently the sponsors do approach the city and apply for their events. And there's an application that's filled out and I think all of the coast, all of the sponsors in years past are pretty used to the process. There's a hundred dollar review fee for my office to look at it and then a hundred and fifty dollar safety review from the Plasterville PD. Those are the only fees attached to any of the special event costs, other than the police department does. Charge for their staff time, but they do a, they do an estimate at, at the time they do their safety review. And that's also something that's, that our, our current sponsors are used to. So what we're proposing tonight is that the seven events that involve closure of the Main Street be deemed as city sponsored events. With the cosponsorship sought from local nonprofits. And the really, the focus of using, creating these as city sponsored events. Means that the Community Services Department would directly manage them and cover costs for the venue plan and the setup for site prep. Tear down the liability insurance and also we're cooperating with cooperatively with PD and fire. To make sure that we execute a good safety plan. And all seven events would be governed, governed by an MOU to outline the roles, responsibilities and any fees. And also the two events that generate substantial income, which are Widerlust and Oktoberfest, would also have language as to mutually agreed percentages of revenue. Split between the city and the co-sponsor. So just to kind of define that a little bit better is the funding concept would be, would involve using the proceeds of the two revenue generating events. And any vendor or cover fees from any of the seven events to cover costs for all seven. To help coordinate and gather resources and volunteers for the events, nonprofits would be sought to assist, but theirs would be supporting role. With the city setting the rules by, by which the events take place. Any surplus funding after expenses and payouts to co-sponsors would be expected to be used for the overall pro. Promotion of the city of Plasterville. And then it's also planned that at the end of each fiscal year, the overall budget and expenses would be analyzed for adjustments to revenue. To adjustments to fees or to split percentages on MOUs and that would be folded into the budget process that we already go through. With the city council and those would be public, public process. And then also not to throw everything in, including kitchen sink, but an additional consideration is also being asked of the council by staff. And that is what to do with these partial closures of the Bell Tower area. And really whether these events need to be taken up by council as they come up or if you want us to go back and try to set standards. By which the city manager and myself could manage them. So just to reiterate. The options the council has tonight are they could approve the changes to the process and protocol, putting Community Services Department as the direct manager of special events. With finalized protocol and co-sponsor agreements to be reviewed and approved in February. And of course, take no action or other action. Working on a cost estimate for, for this. So we're looking at having an estimate for each of the seven special events. And ready in February. And we are expecting. That there would be minimal of any budget impact this year. The only event falling in this fiscal year is the wagon train, Hangtown Days. And we would be developing a budget for each event to propose both revenues and expense, expenses for this budget cycle, which we are now entering, as everybody knows. And also attached to the staff report, there are two letters from residents. And we also had received some other correspondence that our city clerk can outline if, if interested. And also we have the survey results and the special event lists as attachments and I can take any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Terry. Do we have any questions from the council? For Carrie? I've got a couple. Terry, could you clarify the role of the sponsor? So the city is going to cover insurance and safety and setup and, and all that. What will the sponsor be doing?
Are the co-sponsors?
Yes.
Yes, the co-sponsors would be providing the logistics and the coordination, staffing. Volunteers and all of the roles that they normally play. Other than, you know, we, it's, it's, it's more of a perspective switch more than anything else. And also to make sure that the city has greater control over kind of the liability and the overall. Boundaries that, by which these festivals occur. A lot of times, and then my, my. You know, I've been here for three years and only two of these have really been special event years. I started in 2019 and then 2020 was kind of a bust. But my personal experience has been that there's been a lot of confusion, confusion and then kind of reinventing of the wheel. That I've experienced in the current setup that we have right now. And this is. Really. You know, it's, it's caused a lot of staff time to try to focus on things. And really what the city needs to do is ensure that these events are following a predictable and a logical process in their planning execution. A lot of times with the nonprofits managing events, the city's been stuck with staffing for safety when there's no follow through with promised volunteers. And lots of other things that have been very difficult to manage from a reactionary standpoint. So what we're trying to do is be proactive, provide a lot of definition and. Process close up at the beginning and hopefully try to avoid a lot of, a lot of those issues. That have unfortunately used up a lot of staff time and I think caused some ill will after events have been reviewed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Could I make a comment regarding that also? So I just, I just want to clarify in one point or add on to what Mr. Zeller said concerning that process. Regarding co-sponsors. I, I want to assure you that. We are not saying, for example, you received some correspondence on the parade. There's a group that's been running the parade, different sponsors, but a same basic group. That's helped run the parade for many years. We absolutely want to take advantage of that and still use that group to help run the parade. What we're offering in this process is that we will now pay for the insurance. We will provide the security for events. And by so doing though, in order to make that work, as us as a sponsor and providing insurance, we have to have that control of the event. So putting us in as a sponsor and using those other groups to help us operate that, in some cases, that have done the event for years. Or maybe some changes, maybe some want to change things or get out of what they're doing. And we're open to talking about that. But we absolutely want to continue to talk to groups that have done this in the past and work with them to assist and, and set up these events going forward. So.
Okay.
Yes, and Mayor, one other thing I'd like to say to you is the, this, this arrangement also in effect. Future proofs, a lot of these events, because sponsors do come and go. And this provides the city some continuity through changes in nonprofits ability or interest in being able to provide. The resources that each event needs. So that's another thing that we're trying to do by this is, is that if. If we are putting on these events, if, if the, the major players change. We want to still be able to have some continuity for the community.
Okay, thank you. Michael and then Dennis, I see your hand also.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think, I mean, to Terry's point, I think we, it will be nice. I mean, whatever ultimately gets decided to have that continuity going forward and a, and a very clear picture. Cause I, I, Terry's right. It's been a little murky, it's been murky the last few years as we try to like figure this out and, and do it. You know, and try to make it as fair as possible. You know, one question I had and Terry, because you, you mentioned this briefly in your report about. The applicants being. Used to now paying for the, the police fee. My understanding though is that that's been also maybe not as evenly applied. Over the years and over events. Is everyone now kind of know what that is going forward? Cause I think we even had a, a couple of events that it, or at least one event that didn't happen. Because they were surprised when they sort of saw the bill for what the security function was going to be. So I just wanted a better sense of what. What were we cooping on that side when we're the sponsor? And then just for, I, I think it also makes perfect sense for us to take the sponsorships, because when we have to close down city streets. And we're using city resources, including Terry's staff as well as the PD. That really does make us a sponsor or an event. It doesn't happen without any of those things happening. So at the very least, our name should be on there as a city of Plasterville sponsor, when we have to provide, provide all those. To be able to make the event happen anyway. So it, it does make sense from that perspective as well. Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. I think that, yeah, your question goes back to the costs, the police costs really are. And Chief Ren can definitely talk about this, but the costs are completely relational to the complexity of the vet. The Christmas parade is completely different than closed venue such as Widerlust, but they do also, they do both have. A lot of, a lot of staff that has to be put forward and a lot of planning. And there's the difficulties of where on Main Street these are going to happen. Widerlust was going to be very close to the Cedar Ravine area. And that puts a whole different wrinkle in with fire and ambulance services with the Marshall Medical Center up the hill. So the, the thing that. the, the thing that, uh, folks should be happy about would be the fact that these, um, costs are going to try to be mitigated and spread out amongst the calendar for special events and that, uh, the city is, um, committing to making sure that we have, um, the police and the fire plans figured out. And those would be borne by the city and, um, from what we're looking at, it should be very doable to, uh, look at, um, trying to do a, um, kind of a give and take with capturing, um, a portion of that revenue um, at the front end of things and then making sure that, um, everything is taken care of and covered because these events are very different and it's hard to even look at these applications and say these are apples to apples between, say, the Christmas parade, which doesn't have any revenue whatsoever, and then Oktoberfest, which is a very revenue driven event. So I think that the, this makes a lot of sense as far as, uh, the way that we need to operate as a city. And also I think it's a lot more equitable for, uh, the events that have already been approved for the closures.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. Can't hear you, Dennis.
All right. Thank you. Um, with this, this does not preclude us from working with for-profit organizations that, not organizations, but for-profit promoters that also partner with a nonprofit for beer and wine licenses and things like that, right? And then so they, those for-profit orgi- businesses can, because they are, I mean, some of these events, they are a key to, um, to make it to go off their connections, their ability to bring people in, pay, pay places, especially with these, uh, with these, you know, some of these, like, like you said, the Winderlust Beer Fest, Brew Fest or, um, Oktoberfest. Uh, I don't think we're Brew, Beer Fest is in there, Brew Fest, so, um, that's a possibility, correct?
Yes, I think that it would, yeah, it's, it, it's not spoken to in the staff report, but definitely, um, we would be looking at entering into agreements with, uh, when we say nonprofits, that's, um, probably a generalized, uh, thing is, as far as that goes. Because yes, there are critical, um, for-profit folks that, uh, do make things happen. And when there's a revenue side, especially with, uh, things like Winderlust, Oktoberfest, there's definitely for-profit folks that are interested in working with the city and they would be critical, um, factors, to making sure that this whole, uh, plan works out year, year after year.
Okay. And there's, so for instance, like the Christmas parade will still, i- it's still open to have a sponsorship for the Christmas parade.
Could you clarify what you're, what you're asking?
Well, it, so sponsored by, in, or, or co-sponsored by the city of Placerville and somebody else to help um, fund the, the expenses associated with the Christmas parade.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So if I, I don't want to, so if ABC company, because I don't want to name anybody in particular that my mayor may or may not want to do it, but if ABC company said, I want to give the Placerville five thousand dollars, have my name on the banner that goes up, co-sponsored by, and it's a form of advertising, it's a form of supporting, it's a form of supporting our community and a greater community event, they can do that.
I don't see why that would be precluded from any of the discussions we're having right now.
All right. Thank you. Well, I got, uh, some comments related, but thank you.
Terry, one other question. Um, have you spoken with the, you know, likely co-sponsors of the revenue generating events about this kind of general layout and?
Um, I know that, um, uh, the city manager had, has had some discussions I haven't directly, um, but there, um, uh, and I'll let Steve speak to that.
Okay.
I have spoken to one of those that has been one of the operators of Oktoberfest, for example, we have spoken. I'm thinking of the others, not, not really yet. So.
Okay. And are they, um, comfortable with the general direction this is going or?
The one that I talked to was very comfortable with it, yes.
I know the details still are yet to be worked out, but
Right.
that we are communicating. So, okay. Um, all right, any other questions for staff before we open it up to public comment? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open this up to the public.
Public comment is now open for item twelve point two. Sue Rodman, we'll start with you. Go ahead. Good evening, council. Um, my comments are similar to the ones I gave last time. I think this is a much improved process to go through. However, I think one of the things that you are missing here is fire season. Do you remember the Calder Fire and when we had to do Triptide Green to allow people to evacuate? Fire season is August, July, August, September, and the first part of October. You have three events scheduled right in the middle of fire season. All three of those events could move to the fairgrounds with no problem. It would be easy for the car show to be displayed at the fairgrounds. It would be easy to do Oktoberfest at the fairgrounds. It would be easy to do Winderlust at the fairgrounds. And that would leave the highway fifty open to go to Triptide Green if we need it, and it would leave the access for fire and ambulance and police services on Main Street. And I think seven of these events that close Main Street are too many. Especially during fire season, we need to get the three that are in fire season to relocate to the fairgrounds. And I think that could be done without a problem. Now, I'm sorry that two of those, the Winderlust and the Oktoberfest are revenue generators for the city, but I think that the safety for fire season is more important and that we need to take that into consideration. And so I, I, why, I like this process. I think Terry and his staff are to be commended for what they have produced, but I think we need to get it down to the four events that are really in Placerville oriented. The Octo- the, the Hangtown days, the wagon train, the trick or treat on Main Street. You can't do that at the fairgrounds because it is trick or treat on Main Street. The Christmas tree, the Christmas parade and the festival of lights, those are definitely centered in Placerville and need to stay, and they occur outside the fire season. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Call our five two five. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Leo Bennett, Co-Sean, and I think this is a wonderful process. And like the prior caller said, I commend the staff. It's good governance and definite steps in the right direction for count of con- continuity, apologize, and accountability and transparency. So I look forward, um, to hopefully you approving it tonight and seeing the details in February. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Laurel, go ahead.
Hi, Laurel Brump, I'm in the chamber. Um, your earlier caller was suggesting that these events be moved to, um, the fairgrounds during fire season. I'd like to point out that if there were a fire, that's where the fire uh, would be set up, the, the, the fire camp would be set up at the fairgrounds. So that honestly wouldn't be a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. Ruth, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, and also the fairgrounds is really expensive to rent. It's not a simple thing to do. And I think with many of these events, they're trying to find the right balance of, you know, trying to make money and, uh, deal with the fees. I know that was the problem with Winderlust last year. Uh, why they bailed out was because of the fees, and I know for Oktoberfest, we had to do some negotiation there to make it workable. The other thing I wanted to mention as a recipient of the survey, and I do appreciate Peak's involvement, and I do actually attend the Peak meetings, so pretty, um, familiar with their work. You know, this rating of the events, which the question was, what is the most beneficial to your business? And the problem with that is these events generally, except for very few exceptions with some particular stores, they are not beneficial for business. I think the second question could have been, and what do you feel is beneficial for the community? To build community so that people think of us as a fun quaint town and would like to return and visit. So I wouldn't put total, um, all my weight into these ratings, because you see what I'm saying? The way it was asked was, as a business, are you making money on this day? Well, when people come for Christmas parade, there, they pack the streets. I mean, with the exception of maybe Tony Wendell's toy store, maybe the restaurants. People aren't there to shop. People are there to, you know, pa- camp out on the street. And when the parade is over, they pick up and they leave. So, um, that's all I'm saying. I think many of us merchants recognize that we want to, you, you know, the benefit of a, of an event beyond that A. So the, I think you would have gotten different scores if that question were asked in addition. And then you, I submitted a letter. I don't need to repeat what's in my letter. You, you, um, you can read it, you've read it. But thank you for discussing this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Sue, go ahead.
Hi, Sue Taylor, and I'm actually involved in two of these events and, um, it, uh, it, it's kind of puzzling that you would make this kind of a decision without actually talking to the sponsors or the event planners of these events. I, I don't know how you can make a judgment or have statements without any discovery and without that discussion and, and having a back and forth discussion about issues. Terry brought up some issues that I have no clue. We have never, on the events that I've been involved with, the city's never called the event planners or the sponsors and said, hey, this was a problem. Um, as far as I know, it's always been pretty great. Um, I actually talked to the fire chief and he says the, the way the Christmas parade is being run is the best he's ever seen. So we do work with these entities. We work, uh, we have meetings once a month with the police department. We collaborate with the city, we collaborate with Terry. Um, we take the liability for the event. It's kind of surprising that the city would want to take on that liability. I don't know if it's, um, you know, I don't understand the whole intent of this, but, um, so like I said, with the Hangtown days that I'm more over and it's, are you still there? I think I lost you. Okay. Well, I can't see you. My screen just popped off. Um, shoot, sorry. Okay, um. So, uh, last year you implemented a thousand dollar fee and encouraged those that were not gener- you know, money generating, ask for a five hundred dollar waiver. We were encouraged to do that, and then we were denied on that waiver. So we actually even paid a thousand dollars for the, you know, the Hangtown wagon train days, which is a traditional event for the city that are supposed to support that. We really don't ask a lot of the city. Um, until this last year, we've put up our own barriers, um, got a lot of our own security. I do appreciate that this year we did have a good, um, showing with the city that they came out of public works with the barriers and the, the city police were great. But I don't know what the problem is, I guess. And so, um, I guess at this point, well, some of my questions is, it sounds like you just want to get new sponsors that are actually running the events. That was kind of made comment a little bit there. And so what, I mean, the Christmas parade's been put on, it's actually now a foundation that, um, it's gone on for forty-four years and it's run, um, the application is from the Hangtown, Christmas Parade, Inc. Um, that's a foundation that's, um, going to make sure that that event continues into perpetuity. So I don't know what conditions that are needed to be added or subtracted. I don't know what this new plan's going to look like. I mean, and then how do the fees work? I, I think in the past they were really clear. You had an application, you filled out the fee, you had a safety plan and, um, and we've been doing it for so long, it's kind of a rhythm. And then if the city's in charge of that fee, you know, what's the sponsor going to do? I, the, the rules are just not clear. This whole process is not clear, and I wish there'd been a communication with this different events. So if you have any questions, I can come back. Thanks.
Thank you, Sue. Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
Hi, um, good evening, council and, um, from Kathy Lishman. I know that McIntyre Tire did the Christmas parade for years and years and years, and perhaps Sue has been doing it for four years. I'm not sure. And, um, and as far as the wagon days, wagon train days, or whatever she wants to call it, I have heard complaints about both of those events, that there were proud boys that were in both of those events, and I'm not sure that that's appropriate for our town. And also how is it determined who's in charge of the wagon day events and the Christmas parade? Then I also wanted to say something about the tree lighting, about who gets to be in charge of that. I know years ago, the PDA was in charge of it. And there were all kinds of lovely events up and down Main Street where different schools and organizations and musicians and choirs all were able to have a timeframe where they performed on Main Street for the people. So I didn't know how that's being organized these days, but I just guess I was wondering how is it determined who's in charge of the different events? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Lu Han, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I kind of wanted to piggyback on that, um, concept of the, um, complaints and advice system of the recent events.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. Can you speak a little?
Okay, hold on one second. Just a little better?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, okay, sorry about that. Um, so I just kind of wanted to piggyback on that, uh, what the last gal was saying, um, about some of these complaints about some of the recent events. Um, and that's, uh, probably would be my complaint also is the fact that some of the recent parades did have very controversial, um, participants. And I think that one of the reasons this could be coming up is in order to avoid in the future having controversial participants that are more politically inclined or oriented. I mean, Placerville might be a small town, but even myself, I, I went to dinner last night in Sacramento and at the restaurant, there was a bartender there who was talking about, um, the news being an issue from Placerville. And here he is in a restaurant in Sacramento talking about the political issues that are in our little hometown. Um, so I, I think that it would be beneficial to see the city kind of take a little bit more charge with the um, participants and applicants in the parade and future events in order to avoid, um, these controversial issues being concentrated around our hometown and to focus on, um, more family oriented, more welcome, more welcome being, um, uh, participants like local businesses that are already established, the local high school performing with the band, the local dance studio was, had an amazing performance. So I think kind of refocusing more branding would benefit, uh, uh, city again to avoid, um, incidents where we do have participants that are causing controversial upset, um, not only locally, but even in, um, our neighborhood community.
Thank you. Mandy Rodriguez, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I had some complaints about, uh, all the events. It seems that there were a bunch of, um, white liberal women at the events, and that causes me some concern. So we also need to take that into consideration. Um, thank you.
Okay. Madam Mayor, at this time there are no Madam Mayor, at this time there are no, hands raised. Okay. We do have one from Kirk Smith. Oh, yeah, there's a couple others. All right. Oh, he lowered his hand. Call, Colin User One, I don't believe you've heard from you, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So these events downtown or in our town are the secret sauce, right? I I read through all the comments of the thirty two people that were asked to comment on these events and a lot of them said, we make no money, but it's great for community spirit. So these events are the secret sauce that bind us together as a fun community. But on the other hand, these closures make life miserable when you're trying to do business, get through town, especially anywhere near Apple Hill season or the Christmas tree season, which starts the day after Thanksgiving. But some things, these events all need to have vehicle barricades at every end. You need to consider possibly shifting the closures of Main Street to like start using the trail, start using the ancillary parking lots for these events, like a car show. I'm sad if you're going to lose a car show this year. You could park them all up and down the trail in the outside parking lots, leaving Main Street open to come and go, leaving the parking garage open. And you could still have these events without closing Main Street. And where is, I liked a comment, somebody said, what about a Main Street, I mean, at the bell tower, New Year's Eve event? So that's something to consider, but start thinking other ways if you're going to stop having events on Main Street. How can we use the parking lots and outside the area? The third ground is kind of eh eh, who wants to go there? And we can still have these events downtown without closing Main Street. So some thoughts, thank you.
Thank you. I see no hands raised at this time, Madam Mayor. Okay, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council for discussion or motion. Yes, Jackie.
I have some thoughts to add since Terry mentioned that this will still be going back and working out the fine tuning. Some thoughts that I had even just listening this evening on the first event, Hangtown Days, everybody follows it with wagon train days. I think that event should be called wagon train days. I think it used to be called that, it's better for marketing, it describes what that's about and it really is what makes that event. I went to that event this year and after the wagon train went through, there weren't very many people there. I think the people left over could be accommodated by just leaving the bell tower, bell tower area closed. So I thought that's a way we could, you know, open Main Street back up, have the after party right at the bell tower. You know, still have the music and all that. But I I think like ninety percent of that street emptied after the wagon train went through. I know I stand alone and not thinking that the car show really belongs on Main Street, but there was a suggestion in the surveys to bring it back to May and doing it an evening event instead of a day event. And I think on Thursday instead of the weekend. So I thought that's probably a pretty good compromise to not have such a big closure on the weekend. And then I want, just throwing it out there, I've talked to a few people about it. Some people think it's a good idea, some people don't, but combining the Christmas parade and the Festival of Lights on one day so that you wouldn't have two days closed through the holidays, closing down Main Street and just have one big day of events. Something to think about. So my thought is to combine those two events and have six Main Street closures. And then staff was looking for some other recommendations and I was thinking, you know, three to four limited bell tower events. What I mean by that is we're not going to close Stagecoach Alley or the Turn Lane, but you could close that area for three or four events that promote downtown. Specifically, you know, like you have Girls Night Out and The Taste of Maine and there's probably a couple others that could be done really well. And then one other direction staff was looking for is, yeah, I would like to see them as we, after we put the outline, manage the events and not be coming back to council. Those are my initial thoughts.
All right, any other thoughts? Yes, Michael.
Yeah, I just, and I think a couple of callers brought this up as well as, you know, really looking at all of our city assets across, you know, across the city for other potential locations as well, you know, whether it's in a, in our other parking lots or on the trails or, you know, back to gross, the grocery outlet, you know, where we stage for the for the Christmas parade. I mean, I think there's just other things out there that we can highlight other parts of town that doesn't close down the entire Main Street as well. I just wanted to make sure we don't, we always talk about that, but then, you know, whether we really take a hard look at that, you know, as we move forward here. But I I think I like what Terry has presented to us tonight, you know, as we as we move forward here.
All right, thank you, Dennis.
Yeah. To write a little context, the the PDA had been doing this for twenty, thirty years. And they they pretty much started a lot of these, most all these events were started through PDA. And was it two thousand nineteen, they came to us and said, we don't want, we want to do some events, but not all the events that we want, we're going to turn to the city to do. And the city took some over and COVID hit and then things kind of fell apart a little bit. And it became challenging, like, like, like Terry had mentioned, some of the events we ran into challenges and it became controversial. And just just to add a little bit of context, and then it became political. And then, and then one of, you know, one of the challenges was is the, some of the funding was going back to an organization that then turned around and sued the city. And so we're, you know, the these events were funding an organization that was hiring attorneys to sue the city. And it, you know, it's just, that's, that's not what it's all about. This is about supporting our community, supporting this, supporting this town and having events for our community that that are meaningful to our town. And that can then turn around and support more of these, more of these types of of events. And I think that's really what this needs, really is contextually, why we're moving in this direction. And and not only that, the the events that were, that the PDA said we don't want to do anymore were the events that cost money. And then they wanted to keep the events that made money. And so they basically said to city, we don't want to make, we don't want to do them, the ones that make money. And they're the ones that the community actually supported the most, which I found a little ironic too. But, you know, downtown has a long history of being involved and I still think they have opportunities to be involved in so many ways with this as the city moves forward in this direction. Some of the, some of the recommendations I would like to see built into this is that the nonprofits that the city associates with are five oh one C threes, non-political nonprofits. So that this doesn't become a political hot potato. They want to move, move it, they were, we're trying to figure out whether this is a nonprofit that we want to do business with because they're political this side or that side. And then you have all these nonprofits arguing over, you know, who's going to benefit from it in one way or another in terms of this, it needs to be non-political. And five oh C three says they're non-political. And so that's, I think that's important. Fire season, we've tried to ratchet back as much as possible during fire season. It is the best time to have events downtown. It's the most consistent, it's the most it's, it's the best time of year. And yet we have, over the years, we have worked to cut back. That was one of our major issues was we need to cut back because of fire season. And that's kind of started this, a lot of this conversation back about three or four years ago, I think. The outcome for the surveys is not surprising that that downtown merchants and the people that were surveyed, everybody has a different idea of what's good for town, what's good for their business and what's good for that. It's unfortunate, I was hoping there would be a little more decisive results other than, you know, ranking them top to bottom. It's unfortunate about that, but it's the way it is. I like the idea of the bell tower. I absolutely don't see how we can have festival lights and the parade at the same time because of the number of people on the street. I think that would be just nuts. A great idea, I mean, we've talked about nighttime festival, nighttime parade with lights and everything could be different, but even then, festival lights, it's, you know, we'd have to rethink the whole thing, really rethink it. Benham Park is a great opportunity to use for an event. But, you know, I don't think we're, we're going down that road yet, but I think that's just for future conversations. I think that is all I have. I just want to take the, 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 the politicals, the personal agendas out of this and do, and bring it back to the, the for the community. And I think the city has a great opportunity to do that. I know that the city that we have talked about, and talking about this agenda, I'm going to talk about how important it is that the partners that are there, that they stay, that, that, that they continue to participate, that, that it's not a takeaway, it's an addition. This isn't, this isn't a, this, this is adding to the value of these events by having the city involved and helping this consistency maintain because there's been a lot of inconsistencies lately. And with a lot of growing pains and trying to figure out a few things and this kind of smoothes out a lot of those bumps. And I, I, I like this idea. I also like that there's, there's a lot of partners out there that, that can, it's unsettling. It's unsettling that we're doing it different, that the city is getting involved in what used to be all just ran by people outside of the city, outside of the city and the staff. And, and we're coming about, we're not trying to take it over. We, I think that the idea is that it's a partnership to work through this to be, be consistent, have consistency as people change, people come and go. These people that are doing the, the wagon train days are not the same people that did it five years ago. What was, it was a McIntires that did it, then the Mountain Democrat, not the McIntires?
Well, they did, but Mountain Democrat did it for several years.
They did it for like two years.
Two or three years.
Three years, I don't know. It was, it was, but McIntires did it for many, many.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right, and then the Mountain crap did it, Mountain Democrats did it. And then I think the Taylors and some other people were working on it after that. And this just provides consistency. So that's the five oh C three, five oh one C three, I think is, I think is one of the things I'd like to see included in, in this in what we're doing here.
All right, those are good comments. Yes, Patty.
Dennis, you keep talking about non-political. I don't think any of these folks, if they, when they applied, would consider any of this political. So I think the politics came in unfortunate, you know, as an unfortunate way it was entered into that, you know, it was the politics of the current, what's going on in our, actually our world, but I don't think, so I'm not too sure that saying five oh, five oh, what is it, five oh three C?
Five oh one C three or C six.
Yeah.
Well, the C, the C six is they have, I can't remember the exact definition, I don't want to start trying to quote government code right now, but I, the C, the C threes are non-political as opposed to a, a C six that is political.
Well, anyway, but I, and I also want to, I don't think we use the trail area enough and I do agree with the caller that suggested that. I, I just think there's a lot of possibilities, you know, using that particular area. And I'm also in Jackie's corner about trying, and I, and I trying to combine the, the two, the festival lights and the, you know, those two, I think it would be great. You were saying about the, you know, the traffic and stuff, but I would counter with, aren't they the same people that come to both, you know, so maybe it wouldn't be double the amount, you know what I'm saying? It would be, because I think the same people come to the festival lights that come to the parade other than maybe some of the, because they do have a lot of like kids in the parade and I think the light, that brings out a lot of parents that maybe don't come to our downtown lighting, I don't know.
Patty, have you been to the Festival of Lights in the last three or four years?
Yeah, every year.
Can you imagine trying to get a parade to go down Main Street with seven thousand people around the tree?
I wasn't suggesting you have the parade during me, during festival lights, I was suggesting.
She was suggesting, I think, a whole different concept. And like you say, yes, it would have to be that, but if you have the parade, and this is just, I'm just throwing this out. If you have the parade earlier in the day, say start from noon to three or one to four or whatever, you know, however, and then as it starts to get dark, you know, then you have the, the, the tree lighting and the highway fifty lighting, you know, it could be done in one day. You just have to change the hours and, you know, those that didn't want to stay for the evening, people with children and stuff could leave.
So I have a question, process wise, are we, is part of these decisions we're making tonight is re-engineering events? Or is it to just talk about the city and what Terry is doing? Because I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, we could talk about this for quite a while.
Let me, let me jump in there. I think all we want to do is what is in your agenda report tonight in the city becoming the, the primary sponsor of these events. You're right, there's a lot of other things and, and we can, you know, we can take these back and explore them. Terry and I can work on that in terms of, you know, maybe changes to some of these. And, and I want to emphasize, and meeting with the previous operators of these events also to explore how that might work and get their input on it too. All that needs to take place before we come back to you and make any changes to these events going forward.
Thanks, Cleve. I've got a couple of comments, not to engineer, not to re-engineer the events, but just some minor comments to take with you when you go on to the next step of this. You know, there's the two events in August and I believe at the last meeting I had talked about trying to spread those out or move them to maybe May. Neither of those are, you know, it's not like Christmas or Oktoberfest where they're kind of set in stone on the time of year. So if it's possible to move those to May or at least, I think July, there's no event. Just so that there's not two closures in one month for downtown merchants and restaurants, I think that that would be beneficial if it's possible. I like Dennis's comment about the five oh one C three. For sponsors, it takes the subjectivity. You know, right now, there's a lot of accusations, oh, you chose that, that group's political, that group's political, you chose them, you're biased towards that side or whatnot. And I think if you just put a policy in there about, you know, working with charitable donation, charitable organizations for the, the co-sponsor position, it just takes that subjectivity out of it. So I think that that was a good recommendation. I, I do agree with some of the comments that, you know, the events downtown, they really, yes, they should benefit businesses, but some of them should just benefit the community, but they, you know, every event should at least do one of those things. I think in the past we had events that didn't really benefit businesses and they didn't really benefit the community. So, you know, what we're trying to do is make sure that the events downtown, you know, provide a real benefit to the town, whether it's, it's for our community or it's for our downtown merchants and restaurants. So all right, I think those are all of my comments on this. Would anybody, yes, Cleve?
Can I just comment on just one thing quickly on what you referred to as the, the co-sponsors and the five oh one C three? To my knowledge, the, I'll just mention the past two sponsors of the parade in referring to the Taylors and the Mountain Democrat, neither one were a five oh one C three. Now, the foundation they talked about may have that, I'm not sure. But I just want to, I'm not saying we don't go that route, but I just wanted to bring that up, that I think my council member Thomas talked about, you know, asked the question if somebody came up and, and this very likely could be a private business that came up and said, can I donate five thousand dollars and be the sponsor of the parade or to sponsor of?
Because what happens is, for instance, there is a promoter that is going to be promoting Wonder List, Wind Your List. And so, but in order to get their their liquor license, they have to work with a nonprofit organization. Part of that association means that that nonprofit Part of that association means that that nonprofit is, is being funded and being supported by the event. And so there's a, so there's a, there's a symbiotic relationship where they work together. Oftentimes they provide volunteers and they. And they work together with the promoter to put on the event and, and so that nonprofit becomes part of the organization of that event. And that's, that's primarily what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
I would be okay with not saying anything in stone in terms of that and just providing staff the direction that, you know, to develop policies about. You know, so that it would not be subjective about who gets to participate and just develop policies that are clear cut.
And I think that Terry kind of alluded to that, that with, that having the city in charge. Then they set the, you know, the rules and regulations and they have to be followed. Um.
I would, I would like to set that, that rule personally, because I think it's an important one. I think that it eliminates a lot of. Uh, subjectivity on our side as to some of the political.
But.
Businesses should be able to sponsor an event, right? Okay, so it'd be businesses and five oh one C threes?
The five oh one C threes have to do with the, um, the businesses are giving money. And five oh one C threes are receiving money. So they're getting funded by doing what they're doing. And they're usually working with the promoter. The five oh one C threes are not giving money to the event to sponsor, but they're, they're working with the promoter often. For when it comes to association with the liquor license.
Okay, so the beneficiary should be a five oh three, yes.
I see Mona that's showing up again.
No, I was, I, you know, so what you're being asked today is to. See if you're interested in adopting a resolution in which the community services department can help manage some of these special events. And what I'm hearing, um, and maybe rather than getting into the weeds about whether it should be a five oh one C three or whatnot. Um, what I'm hearing is that the city council definitively wants to create a limited public forum. Which means that whatever event it is, needs to be in the furtherance of. Um, the, you know, some benefit to the city or community and not include political or religious activity. And so by directing staff to ensure that that limited public forum is created. I think that they could move forward with creating protocols that establish that. Um, and then, you know, just from my experience with other communities, sometimes. You do have an organization that's not set up as an example to be, um, a five oh one C three. But they are, you know, a grassroots organization that does actually, or they're a volunteer group that, that does exactly what you want them to do. So. Um, just based on what I'm hearing, one of the, um, directions of this council could be. That the staff ensure that we're creating a limited public forum to achieve those objectives.
I like that. Thank you.
I don't fully understand it, but I, but I, I, I like, I like Mona, so I think, it sounds like what I was saying, thinking.
Just to, just to add a little bit, uh, so a limited public forum, it's, it's a legal term of art, but basically. What we're trying to do is when anytime government is in charge of something or co-sponsor something, we have to be. Extra cautious that we are not, um, selecting, um, participants or, um, organizations. Um, and discriminating against others, right? But when you define what it is that you're looking for, and ours is. The, you know, community and city, um, benefited, um, events. And we want to exclude political or religious speech. Then we can definitely pick and choose who's going to be participating, who's going to be co-sponsoring it. By excluding everyone on that same criteria. So if we say no religious organization or no religious activity, excuse me, or no political activity, then that's okay. Um, again, the critical thing is that we make sure that whatever guidelines are adopted or whatever the objective of the city is. That it's equally articulated, but, but the key here is to make everyone know. What it is that you're trying to do. And what I keep hearing over and over on this agenda item. Is you don't want these community events to then be sidetracked and turned into, you know, a political debacle or. Insert other things in here that are distracting from the community, um, involvement that you wish to see.
That sounds like some for a future date.
I, I want to just talk about something because last year this came up. And I wanted to talk about how many events or how we did it. And the council said, oh, it's too late, we have to approve it. They're already planned. And one of the recommendations is asking for the seven downtown approved events. So this really does seem like the spot to talk about. Do we want all seven? Do we want the car show? Do we want to combine them? Um, if it's not, that discussion doesn't happen here, where is it supposed to happen? Because we're giving specific direction for seven events.
I, I think that we had a pretty good discussion about the events and I, I feel comfortable with the seven events that are listed here.
Okay, that's, that's what I want. I mean, I, I just felt like somebody said, oh, we don't have to worry about those details now. It, it really does seem to me that. We should decide those details one, one way or the other, and that, because we're not going to have this conversation again.
Yeah.
Oh, we will.
So would an example be the car show? Cause we've all brought that up, that maybe we would rather see it. A different time of the year, like in May and having in the evening. And here it's specified in August. You know, so do we, if we approve.
Yeah, it, it seems like we're approving this list that staff recommended.
And, and we're, we're all having feelings that it should, maybe some of these things should be held at a different time, et cetera, et cetera.
I, I will caution you on the car show, only because there are circuits associated with the car show, and if you're a car show person. You, you, you don't just change a car show without making sure you have a slot on a day that. That these people go to, that you're gonna, the, the, it's, it's a thing. And so if, if Terry or, or, or the city or whoever decides to do that. We decided that, we certainly need to take that into consideration.
And I, can I add to that? I, I, I agree, that has been an issue. They did do a Thursday night car show previously. Um, in May, um, and we, we eliminated that, I believe, last year. Is that correct, Terry?
No, it's actually the other way around. We eliminated the weekend Sunday car show and we kept the Thursday evening. August car show.
Okay.
So that's, that's the, that's the existing circumstance right now, and the Lions Club is aware of that circumstance.
Okay, so I, I think that the, the answer is, we would attempt to go to them and say, can we readjust that to May? And if not, you know, at least for this year, maybe you say, okay, we keep that for this year and, but maybe we will continue to work with them. To establish a new date. I mean, I'm hearing what you're saying and we can work with them on that.
Yeah, and we actually just had that conversation, um, because the Lions Club was thinking that the May car show was the one that was on. Instead of the August one, just because of the mix-ups that we've had with COVID and everything else. And I had reiterated, looking back at the staff recommendations and the council, uh, approval, that it was the August. Evening car show that was approved. And so that they are looking at, um, other venue for their May show right now.
Potentially they could. Do it in May.
Yes, I mean, we just had this conversation two days ago, so I, I think that it's possible, yes.
I mean, I would feel comfortable, you know, approving, approving this as is, um. And adopting the resolution and giving staff the direction to, um, try to spread out these events. To, you know, May and, and other months where there is no events, but the weather is still really nice. Um, I'm, I would also like to encourage, you know, some, like, um. The Benham Park area as well could be developed potentially, and I, you know, I think we can give staff direction to. Continue to look for other venues for these events, but go ahead with, um, the resolution. You know, and moving forward with kind of taking over the sponsorship of them. Yes.
Now, I think this whole conversation started with Main Street events, and that's really should be the focus of the discussion. I mean. I think we all want events to see them happen other places or whatever, but this is really about closing Main Street.
Right, and we're, if, if we're striving not to close Main Street, um, you know, is, I'm just very seldom. Um, if I remember that. And, and, you know, it's just like Sue brought up about. Fire season, but we've, there's always, it, I'm not even thinking of fire season. It was holding these events, uh, you know, closing Main Street and, and, and then also starting. And having October, I mean, having, uh, Apple Hill and, uh, loading up the highway and. You know, that's what we're trying to eliminate. I, I was under the impression that that's what really this is all about. So I think we need to, you know, think about that.
And our, our trip to Green program may, may come in handy with some of these, these issues as well, so. But that's dealing across, there's, there's a lot, there's, there's so many things that are being discussed here. It's quite significant.
Um, going back to Jackie's point, you know, just. To clarify perhaps, um. You know, I don't think, I think that we can say, yes, go ahead on, um, coming up with a proposal to take over sponsorship of these seven events. Um, but I don't think that needs to bar us from in the future, if there is another venue, uh, other than Main Street to move some of these events to. You know, I think that our staff should have the, um, latitude to, to do that. I don't think that we need to say. This is only for Main Street, we're only sponsoring these events and only if they happen on Main Street. I think we should say. We're going to sponsor these events and, you know, if, if the trail works out or if Benham Park works out for them, then that's great too.
I'll tell you what, if a new event or a different event comes through. It's going to be well-vetted and well, well thought out before it comes to the council again, so that, uh. You know, it's not every time somebody decides they want to do an event, it ends up on our lap. There's going to be some, I think, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, that kind of is where we're headed to.
Well, that's what I thought the whole point of this was. We were going to limit the Main Street events and stop those applications and, you know, we're only going to close. Main Street for these purposes. Um, the other thing staff has brought up that we haven't really talked about is closing the bell tower area. And giving direction with that. I mean, are we going to make that a sep- separate agenda item or do we want to tackle that here?
I think, I think that's just an encroachment permit for one evening that, that may or may not, uh. You know, that they could put on, it's, it's not a street closure or anything like that, so.
Well, I think we've talked about, some of us don't feel that they should close Stagecoach Alley in the turn lane. I mean. I'm fine with the bell tower events as long as they don't close the access to the parking garage. But also, you know, that these, you, you're still closing down part of the street and the parking areas and in front of some of the businesses. And it has to be purposeful for the city. You know, it can't be anybody's going to come in and, oh yeah, I'm going to rent that area for fifty bucks and shut it down and have my party. You know, that, it seems to me there need to be some guidelines with that.
I agree. Um, and I think that, you know, the criteria should be, does it benefit the community? And does it benefit, or, or, and or, does it benefit the downtown merchants? Um, and that would be like the minimal criteria for, but I also, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of that space being used. But I also don't think we want it to be used every, it's still disruptive. So I don't think we want to have, you know, a. Inf- infinite number of events using that every week, weekend day or anything like that, so.
Yeah, that's why.
And I, and I also think that we shouldn't say to benefit the downtown merchants, because we've got two other areas in this town that, you know.
But this is downtown. I mean, it's.
But, uh, uh, those other areas can come up with their own events and, and they have it different times.
Yes, Jackie.
The, the thing about the bell tower is you have an event at the bell tower area. They use up the parking garage, the parking garage that the downtown merchants or landowners paid to build. So, you know, to say we're going to have, we're going to allow these events every Friday and Saturday night, you know, really infringes on. The parking that they've paid for, for their businesses. So unless that. Event is benefiting the downtown businesses, I have a hard time justifying giving up the parking garage.
Yeah. So perhaps when we get around to making a motion, which will hopefully be soon. Perhaps we can. As well to, um, include some guardrails and parameters on the belt, the use of the bell tower. Does that? Work for you, Terry? Okay. All right. Does anybody want to? Take a stab at this? Is there still more discussion for it?
We're good.
Let's see, I'd move that we, uh. Adopt a resolution directing the community service department to administer the seven approved downtown special events that weren't Main Street closure. Uh, show an attachment to authorize the staff to implement, uh, the revisions to the special events first process and protocols to provide overall administration of the events. And provide some cost recovery where possible. Uh, I think just how it's read, authorize staff to engage nonprofits for their co-sponsorship and coordination of certain special events to provide and improve. Continuity in the future and to develop policies. That reflect. These resolutions. Is there, do we need? Pardon?
Do you want to mention the limited public forum?
Yes, but I couldn't remember the, the verbiage that Mona said, but, and I don't like saying what she said, because you never know which, how people interpret that, but. Mona, what did you call it?
Establishing a limited public forum to, um.
Yes, we, can we just go with that and then, uh, we could include that, yes. Thank you.
What about the events around the bell tower? Do we want to have staff bring back a proposal for a limited amount in the parameters around that?
It has, it hasn't really been a problem. I'm not sure. Are we creating a legislative solution for a problem that doesn't exist or?
Looking forward and.
Does staff feel like they've had adequate direction from council in terms of including some parameters around the bell tower usage? Um, and also having the latitude to, you know, rearrange dates to spread them out and things like that, or do you feel the need to have those in the resolution?
I think the date thing is pretty obvious. Um, I think we're going to continue to want to refine how those events work to the benefit of. Um, all the conditions that we have i- in any particular year. Uh, I think that the council also, uh, set some policy when they approved the event for Taste on Main. And I think that that is something that we can utilize moving forward. So I'm not sure if that's necessarily has to be part of it. It was just a. Discussion point that city manager and I wanted to put out there just to, um, hear some discussion on, but, um. Cleve, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I, I was just going to mention, what, what I, the only thing I'm asking, and maybe I can get clarification on is. For example, Winder List, um, was very, pretty popular in the survey that it came out that that's one they seemed to like. The idea is that probably it could be handled around the bell tower. Do we need to bring that back to council or can we just do that one like that on a staff level? I think it's a good event, popular for businesses, et cetera.
Are we now going to define the locations of each of the events through this motion?
No, not necessarily, not necessarily, but you find what can be on, what can close Main Street. And so anything else that came forward, and I'll use, I mean, again, I think I said.
I think my resolution is, I don't, I don't intend to exclude the use of Upper Maine with my resolution.
Let me, let me go back. I quote my statement, I didn't, I didn't mean Winder List, I meant, um, Girls Night Out. I'm sorry. That, I created a confusion. Why do let's take that off. Girls Night Out was very popular. As an event that's not currently approved for a Main Street closure, has operated around the bell tower at least one year in the past. And I think maybe could, but my question is, do you want events such as that? The Taste of Maine, et cetera. Do you want those to come back to the council or do you want us to set a policy and put those together and just approve them on a staff level?
I would rather you set a policy, um, and, and have the council approve the policy and then let staff approve it on a staff level.
Right, we could, we can do that. We can bring that back for you at a later date.
Okay, so since nobody's seconded yet, in addition to my motion would be for, to direct staff to come back with a policy to. To, uh, address, uh, the closure of the area around the bell tower, but not a street closure.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a first and a second. Uh, roll call vote, Ms. O'Connell.
Member Barelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Now.
Hi.
Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Vice, uh, Vice Mayor Saragossa.
Hi.
Councilmember Thomas.
Hi.
Thank you, um, and thank you for everyone that spoke, um, and share their opinions on that. Um, moving on to item twelve point three, this is to authorize staff to proceed with program to provide outdoor dining on Main Street.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, previous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, previously, the council directed staff to or to take back to. Our Economic Advisory Committee basically three items, one of them you just discussed, a second is this one. Which is whether or not to consider allowing additional, uh, outdoor dining, um, on Main Street. This was brought up, uh, as a result of when we had outdoor dining, when the restaurants were closed down and had outdoor dining during the. The last year, which we closed, stopped doing last, uh, May, I believe it was. And so, we, we went to our Economic Advisory Committee, asked them some questions. We had several, two or three discussions with them. And then, uh, we developed a survey again that we put out for them to, uh, for them to review and to consider. And when we did that, um, we came back with some, some recommendation, or they came back with. The results of the survey and it wasn't as conclusive as potentially we we would have liked. Uh, however, it was positive in that, um, uh, there was, what's the number? Fifty, fifty, about fifty-eight percent were in favor of doing that with forty-one percent against. Uh, main complaint against is is loss of parking for for that. In the end, uh, the Economic Advisory Commission or Committee recommended that we do move forward with it. Their recommendation was to use a lottery process, uh, to first find out. Who who was interested in terms of the restaurants? And then do a lottery to allow three restaurants to basically lease or encroach into the. Uh, parking area to do outdoor dining. Um, I believe they set up that up for a two-year period, so they would. Be allowed to do that. They would be required to build the structure based on standards. And requirements that the city would set for for safety and security and and et cetera for for the structures. And and then they would be required to pay a fee. For for leasing that, whether it's on a monthly basis, an annual basis, however we set that up. Those numbers have not been established in terms of, uh, the cost for doing that. It was suggested by Peak that it'd be similar to what the cost of a parking space is, uh, to use. However, our parking spaces on Main Street are for two hours. Free parking, you can't reserve those longer than that, so it's kind of, so anyway, there's some interesting concepts to look at in terms of how you may establish that fee. There were other options that were considered. They looked at the possibility of, you know, do we not make it? Um, specific to a restaurant, but simply create outdoor dining areas. That anyone could go to a restaurant, get their food to go and go to these areas to rest. That way they would also be open to the public that may be just shopping and wants to take a break during the day, so it opens up that. In the end, however, they did vote to, um, do the lottery system to allow. It to be adjacent to a restaurant that could be used specifically by that restaurant for outdoor dining. I think that's mostly all for this report. Um, I'll have, I'm happy to answer any questions. If you have any for me at this time.
Thank you, Cleve. Do we have any questions? Yes, Patty.
I have one that occurred to me is, we have one, uh, business owner that owns three restaurants downtown. Um, would he be eligible to enter the, uh, to have more than one? Or was that even discussed?
That was not discussed, but I assume we would do it on a, by restaurant basis, um. But I'm open for suggestions on that, so.
Which means he could, you know, get all three.
But then, potentially, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I thought we'd wait till we got public comment and then kind of get into it a little bit more.
Okay, um, I do have some questions for, um. Peak, uh, member of Peak if they're, if they're here, and I think, I think at least one of them is. Um, so I'll, I'll ask the question and then during public comment, if if there is a member from Peak that would like. Step up and talk about it, that'd be awesome. Um, I was curious about, you know, one of, as Cleve mentioned, one of the options that we talked about was having. Kind of more shared parklets that would, um, be publicly owned and available to anyone that wanted to grab food to go or have a seat. Um, and I was just kind of curious. What the rationale was for going a different direction from that. Um. And I think that that is my only question for Peak, so with that, I'll open public comment and.
The comment is now open for item twelve point three. We'll start with Sue Rodman, go ahead.
Um, good evening. This is one that I watched in action. Over the last year and thought it was, uh. It was great for the restaurants who could do it, but for traffic on Main Street, it was a nightmare. Because Main Street is really pretty narrow, and when you put all of those restaurants. Uh. Structures in the middle of the parking, and some of them really went outside of the parking, so they actually narrowed the street even more than it already is. And it makes, uh, it also made it very difficult where the bump outs are and the pedestrian lanes going across the street. Made it difficult to see those pedestrians before they were actually in front of your car. So I really think this is a, is a bad idea. I would like to see us not do this. I think for safe, public safety, it's not a great idea. Let, we had, what happened to our little parklet? That one was kind of a success. But it was on the wrong side of the pedestrian lane, and so you could not see anyone until they were in the street. In from the, coming out from behind the parklet, so. Are we going to have our parklet back on the online? Is that one of the things? Or are we going to, uh, just have these, uh, three restaurants somewhere along Main Street that get to. Do the lottery, and if they're on the lottery and they win the lottery, are they up for the whole two years? Or there, is there a rotation here where we limit how long you can have your outdoor dining? Just for those reasons, I think this is not a great idea. I would like to see this one shelved. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
Good evening, Kathy Lishman. I would just like to say, I know the council was leery to ask questions ahead. But I think by the council doing that ahead, it gives the public more information on which to make their comments, because. Once the public hearing is closed and the council starts asking questions. And gathering information, the public can't respond anymore. Thanks.
Be happy.
John, go ahead.
Howdy. Um, I'll try to, uh, answer that question. That was asked, and I do this to the best of my memory, and that is, um, my rec- my recollection of that discussion was rather than just having parklets. Uh, was that, um. Yeah, I guess it was to parts of it, and Cleve, please help me out here, but my re- memory is. Um, not everyone would want one of these things in front of their storefront, so there, there was that. So one of the reasons why I said, well, interested parties could be involved, that then they'd be an interested party. Um, I think it's important too to note that it's, I believe it's just one spot, right? Cleve, you can just nod. Is it one spot or two? Two, no, 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 each one is one spot.
Yes, you're correct.
Yeah, we're talking about three parking places, so when folks are hearing that, three parking places. Um, I understand the issue of safety, we talked about that. These are going to be built. Far more robustly and just for that very reason. Because, you know, if they're gonna be out there, so not permanent, but quasi-permanent features on the street. They certainly have to be able to take a few blows. My understanding is though is that the parklet as an example was, I don't think it ever got, I don't think it got hit. Um, and so, uh, at least no one ever reported it getting hit. Um, I understand the issue of of things being up near the. The the ball bouts, which you have to remember, there's, there's, the ball bouts are designed. Basically to provide you space, even if there's something right up against the ball bout, because there could be a very large car. Or a van or something in a, in a parking space. And there's, the way ball bouts are designed, they give you even a little bit more, so if you're out at the edge of a ball bout, you would be. Uh, um, out beyond a parking spot, the the, just a little bit, but enough to give you visual, so. Although I understand that and I, I, it is a concern, Main Street's very narrow. Um, anyway, um, the, the, the idea of it having, um, oh. Um, the two years, that's just, you know, we thought that would make it worth somebody's while, because these things aren't gonna be cheap. We did talk about a rental, like a rental number, um. And I think it was Pierre that had had some research from some study that was done somewhere. And we paid a thousand dollars, I think with a thousand dollars, I makes me wanna go get a taco at Taco Bell. Anyway, uh, a thousand dollars per month per space. And I believe that came out of some, but we didn't nail that down. That would be something that would have to be. You know, almost certainly, uh, and that's because I'm not talking to you from, um. That would have to be figured out. So anyway, uh, the, the, the answer to your question specifically was. The reason we did say parklet is because we thought there might be a bit more going on. We thought it would be specific to a certain space in front of a certain store. Uh, the parklets could be put anywhere. In fact, they could be put in situations where there would be much, so anyway. Uh, I, I don't speak for the peak, I, the question was asked, I try and do the best I can to answer it, and if. I mean, if anybody has anybody other, other questions, I will be listening in. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John, and I do wanna note that I did give him a little bit of extra time because he is, um, on our Economic Advisory Committee that prepared. The information for the staff report, um, and I had, I had asked him specific questions, so, okay, moving on.
Ruth, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. Yeah, I attend Peak meetings monthly, usually, um. And I just wanted to add a little more that I'm not sure made it into the report as a merchant, um. Some things that I had thought would be beneficial for this formula stuff, um. Yes, it had been presented as three separate single parking spaces in lottery. For three restaurants for two years to have that single space in front of their restaurant. And I think actually, um, it should be considered that it'd only be two single parking spaces. And I think it also should be considered that it's one year instead of two, and I think that if these are built uniformly. You know, with the roof and lattice sides and, you know, something that's. Better than mash tents or pallets or whatever else, and I think it's agreed upon, we're not gonna have that again. That was just temporary for COVID. You know, I don't see why, if it's constructed with nuts and bolts, it can't be deconstructed. And moved to another location. Um, this doesn't have to be the creation of the wheel. Every time it's, um, another restaurant gets it. The other thing I wanted to point, point out with the ball bouts. Where the parklet had been in front of Timmy's Brown Bag was really on the wrong side of the ball bout. If you want protection. From traffic and the traffic, let's say, is westbound, you need to put it on the far side, so the bulb. The ball bout is a protection against a car running into the, um. Running into the structure on the street. Uh, because that was brought up also that, you know, would there be bollards or something else for protection? But you follow, I think you understand what I'm saying, it should be on the far side of the ball bout in the direction that you're driving. So, those things were brought up, I don't know if they made it into the report, but, um, as a merchant, I would support. Two of these on the street and not in the way that the parklet had been, but let, let the restaurant. Take that twenty spaces, twenty feet of a, uh, parking space and put the tables within the way they want to. Um, the parklet design doesn't really, the old parklet design doesn't lend itself to. It just had one table in it, and that's not the best use of twenty feet, so that's my input. I hope that you do. Um, approve something out of the restaurants. You know, it's kind of a European feel to have. Is my time up? Dining on the street, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Mickey Kaiserman, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I, I, Mickey Kaiserman, I'm on Peak, and I worked on this project with a few other Peak members. And we were trying to, we had a number of restaurateurs come in and say they wanted this additional dining, and that's why we stuck towards the. Restaurant space as opposed to just having a parklet to be put anywhere. And they said it really helped, would help their business out, and we wanted the ball to be consistent. We didn't want it to look like a shanty town, that's why we said. They would all be under a design created by, uh, with the auspices of the city looking over it, so they'd all be similar. And the reason we went for two years is because this would be an expensive build out, and we felt if you wanted to do this and you wanted to join the lottery. It would take you two years probably to recoup your investment. And we, we did have an exact number of what it was gonna cost, but we tossed around some numbers around a thousand dollars a month and. We weren't sure it was even gonna fly like that. We also added that they'd have to name the city on the city's liability policy if they were gonna build out the space. And, um, I mean, that was really, and we also had pick six people out of the lottery, and if one of those three decided not to do it. We'd go to number four, five, and six down the road. That's all I have to add.
Thank you. Kirk Smith, go ahead.
Did it work? Did a audio come through?
I can hear you, Kirk.
Oh, good. Uh, I endorse the comments of Sue Rodman. We do have a big safety issue. Main Street, you know, created in eighteen forty-eight or so, follows natural geographic lines. So you'll notice that when you're in the morning and headed east, you run against the sun with that in your eyes. And in the other direction in the afternoon, you've got sun in your eyes again. It was made for horses going maybe five miles an hour. You need, before you move on something like this, I would think you'd need information about how many times. The bullards have been hit, and the answer is multiple times. There's two right in front of the bell tower, uh, that were hit several times and had to be replaced. Uh, then someone commented about the parklet that you had and whether it had been hit, and the answer is, yes, it had been. And I think you need accurate information on, on, on it being hit how many times. So there really is a big safety issue. Also, I'm leery of whenever the city makes promises, because when the. The parklet was first proposed, we were told to be out of there by October, just until October. And then it wasn't until like January of the next year, and then it was purchased to come back again and again. So, um, you really wanna avoid going down this slippery slope of having it. I think it's really a big safety problem. And parking has always been a problem Main Street, so this just simply would not help. Those are the views I think, uh, I'd ask you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Call in user one.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. Hey, uh, first of all, I don't understand why we're hearing all of these. Inputs from the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee on important issues. When the Planning Commission hasn't been asked these issues. Peak is just some ad hoc little committee. The Planning Commission is an actual authority. So, it's kind of insulting and upsetting that you're not asking the Planning Commission what they think of these plans. So stop it. Second, Mr. Clarici did not say he was speaking for himself and not for Peak. Which might be a round act, uh, violation or definitely a violation of city policy. You're supposed to say, as a member of this committee, I'm speaking for myself. Clear that up. Um, I agree with how many bullards have been hit. Those things cost like five, ten thousand dollars apiece, whatever they cost. How many have been wiped out over the years since put in place? What's the cost of the city on those things? I absolutely disagree with the little tent on the parking spaces on Main Street. God invented buildings for businesses to rent, purchase, and move into. The whole idea, the whole concept of putting tents on the street. So business can profit is. It's just wrong. I understood you guys did fantastic by saving the city. is just wrong. I understood you guys did fantastic by saving the city on a temporary basis by allowing businesses to move out in the street. But when you're talking about allowing just these little parklet things for restaurants only, ignoring all the other businesses, the retail, everybody else, that's just wrong. It needs to be, if it's going to be taking a public parking space to allow businesses to profit, needs to be everyone down there, all those businesses get to use it. Not a restaurant gets to put a tent in front of their business or down the street, and that's theirs only. It is open for every business, everyone to go down there with peanut butter and jelly sandwich from their kitchen. So please stop giving benefits to only one group over and other. And no to the little tents on the street until we actually have a dangerous pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Ross, go ahead. Mayor, excuse me, Madam Mayor, um, David Ross is unable to, um, because of his version of Zoom, he's not able to um, speak unless he is a panelist. Do you mind if I promote him to panelist so he can speak on this item?
Hello, David.
Hi, hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Uh, sorry about that. Um, I just wanted to say I'm in general of support of uh, outside, outside dining. I think each one should be looked at, um, individually. Um, some, some of the restaurants don't necessarily make sense. And yeah, some of them are dangerous. Um, just based on where they are located on Main Street. Um, such as like bricks. And I think some of those were actually hit when they were, when there's people dining there. Others make much more sense, um, like over towards where Benny is. And some of them could even be shared, um, like where the farm table and heyday um, are because they're so close. So, um, just, just in, in general, as someone that's, that's going.
David, you've frozen up.
That, that's all you could, you can, you can, you guys can be forward if you, if you caught that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Tony Wendell. Go ahead.
Hello there. Can you guys hear me? Okay. This is Tony Wendell speaking as a business owner on Main Street. At first I was not a fan of the parklets, um, or the, uh, the outdoor restaurants. And then the overwhelming response from the community was incredible. People, the public, the people that we serve, the people that we're here for, loved it. And I know our street isn't really made for that. So I think it's a good idea to maybe pursue this and, and probably get one or two out there because the people really like it. And that's the most important thing. And now this is Tony Window speaking as a Peak member. Um, we're not ad hoc. We really do care. And as one of three of the people from the subcommittee of this particular questionnaire who called in, um, we really put a lot of thought into this and, and I hope that everyone listening right now can, can, can really, uh, you know, feel, be with us on the fact that, that we're trying to do the right thing. We're trying to make everyone happy. The business owners, some of them liked it, some of them don't. The restaurants really loved it. But at, at the end of the day, the community really liked having those. And, uh, thank you for your time, guys. And, uh, happy 22.
Thank you, Tony.
Taking public comment from El Dorado County Republican Women Federated.
Federated, um, but you know, it's kind of weird. Like I just don't understand. You guys are on Zoom call because of COVID, right? Because we can't join, um, you know, what a dozen people in town hall, but yet we're discussing businesses, you know, that have indoor dining right now. I just am like, what planet are we on? So COVID exists in town hall, but it doesn't exist in any restaurants or businesses on Main Street. Like, I don't know, like if you guys are going to be on Zoom, why don't you just open up Main Street for, um, let them all have outdoor dining again. Cause if COVID exists in town hall, it has to exist in all these restaurants. And I guess we're, you know, still in the pandemic. So I don't know, let everyone have their outdoor dining back again until the COVID theater is over. I mean, seriously, I mean, does it, does, am I the only one that thinks this is a little ridiculous? You guys are all on Zoom. We can't meet in town hall, but yet we could all meet across the street.
We have something on item 12.3. We're not.
I'm just making the case for outdoor dining. I'm making the case for outdoor dining. Is you guys should just open up outdoor dining for everybody. I mean, are you telling me you guys all can't go across the street to tortilla flats and, um, dine inside, but you guys can be, you guys can't meet in town hall? Like, I mean, it seems kind of silly. So I'm all for outdoor dining. It was great. I didn't really like it at first. I wasn't sure. Um, if you guys can find some, uh, uh, conformity and, you know, some planned out um, type structures, you'd have to have some sort of concrete barrier in front of it because you, you know, people definitely struggle to drive on Main Street and park. Um, but yeah, why not do something to where maybe pick a month or two of key weather and do the outdoor dining then and just do it on a month to month basis instead of a full two-year thing. I mean, you could be creative with this. Make that, make that one of your festivals. Your this is my thought, but you know, if we're playing COVID theater, everyone should get to do outdoor dining again.
Thank you, Mandy. Julie Robinson, go ahead.
Hi there. Um, I just wanted to thank Peak. I think they did an excellent job on the research and I totally, uh, mirror what Tony's saying. It was really fun having the, um, the restaurants open and it really did remind me of good vacations that I had spent in Turkey and in other European places. So I think it's great. And thank you so much for considering this.
Thank you, Julie.
Madam Mayor, there are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. Yes, Dennis. I can't, I can't hear you, Dennis.
I hate that. Um, I don't know that I'll get used to it by the time we go back to in person. Um, back in the day, a, a, a value of a parking space, this is 2000, right around the year 2019, 98, 99. We did the, we did the whole revitalization plan for downtown. We did parking re, redesign parking and all the spaces and why they need to be where they're at. And that whole thing was redone. One of the things that came out of the study was the value of a parking spot in terms of sales tax dollars and other things generated. They, they determined, I don't know all the factors, but $14,000 was the value of one parking space per year. Or per month, per year. Oh boy, that's really bad if I don't remember which one it is. But even if it's per year, it's still it, in, in 2000, you know, $2,000, then the year of 2000, the dollar then versus what it'd be worth now in terms of, I'm not making a lot of sense, but I think the value of parking spaces to merchants downtown are very important and valuable. And to take away parking spaces to benefit another merchant, I think we need to be very cautious, cautious about it during COVID. We took parking spaces away. Uh, and in the, the parking lots were empty anyway, so it really didn't matter. And parking really didn't become an issue until about the time we took them back out again. And, uh, and so I think that, you know, while it was, the parking was good downtown for, uh, was very plentiful during that time. I think that there was, there was, um, it got to a point where I think that you can see the parking lots getting filled up in these parking spaces. And I don't know that in watching cars try and park in between these and around them, it was pretty amazing how creative some people have gotten, how to get their cars in between there. That's all I got to say right now. I may have some more in a minute.
All right. Um, any other comments on this? Yes, Michael.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I really like the idea. I, I've been a supporter of something like this prior to even the pandemic coming around is sort of a not a natural progression, but certainly a, uh, when you have downtown areas or, um, in, in lots of other areas, the cities that there is a, a robust outdoor eating area to go along with, um, restaurants. And in our case, we have a small street and we have a small sidewalk. So really the only option would be to go in, you know, to go into a, a parking space to be able to do something like this. I think it's small enough. And we're going to move it around enough where it would still be, it would be a nice enhancement, I think, for the residents and for guests in our city, where it's not like during the pandemic where every single restaurant had one of these. And then we had other things going on and, and they sort of grew even larger than I, I think we ever expected some of them to be. Uh, and, and so you had like whole block or whole swaths of Main Street basically blocked off. That's not going to be the case in this, in this, um, instance. And they're going to move around a little bit based on what, uh, Pika recommended. I like that two years because you are going to, you know, invest some money into this. Uh, but it would give, you know, whether it's one time it's at farm table and then it's down the block at Benny or wherever it might be. You know, I, I do think that would help, uh, enrich downtown. Um, three spaces during those times is not going to change what's happening, um, in terms of the overall, um, economic output on Main Street, uh, during these times. And so I, I do think it would be, uh, kind of need to watch and see how that would grow. I don't know about the costs because I agree with Dennis. I, I think there, there should be a cost and, and there needs to be a cost and probably a pretty decent one. Uh, and I think that will also limit the amount of people willing to go forward with this. It's really going to be the ones that really feel they have a good business plan that would allow them to actually undertake something like this. So I think that's going to be a limiting factor on who goes forward with something, um, that would want to even put their name into a lottery. So my thoughts for now.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Um, any other comments? Jackie?
In the pattern.
Um, I love outdoor dining, but I think it's going to be really difficult to apply this fairly between businesses and, you know, the company, it's going to give unfair company, the edge to anyone who gets outdoor dining because quite frankly, you know, outdoor dining is a consideration when my husband and I go somewhere, you know, it gives you an edge up on that. But then you're going to look at these parking spots sit empty for months. You know, valuable parking spots through the rainy season. It's too cold. It's too hot. And our parking spots are going to sit empty. I, I really, I feel like it has to be applied fairly. I think two years, I mean, that's a long time. But I, I liked the parklet. They were for everybody. And, you know, I would be in favor of doing something like where we close off the bell tower area Friday and Saturday evenings and we set up tables and let everybody take Thai, takeout. And you can get Thai and you can get Mexican and you can get Italian and let's all meet down and, you know, have our outdoor dining experience. But then we're not favoring any one particular business. We're not giving anyone advantage. It's, you know, it's there for everybody. But that's kind of my thoughts on it.
Okay. Patty, did you want to say something?
I do. Um, I have the same thoughts, um, along those lines of, of fairness. I, I think it's totally unfair. Um, they're going to select three restaurants. Um, and then, you know, naturally everybody's going to favor those. And I, I don't think, um, and I also, um, I think it's going to be very costly. And I, I honestly, I don't, the restaurants are having a rough time now. And then to have to, you know, pay us for a parking spot and, and construct something of much better than what was in there before. Um, I, I just don't, I don't think it's doable. Um, and I, but I will say that I definitely would favor like a Plaza type thing that Jackie mentioned, maybe having, you know, set up tables or, uh, uh, in the bell tower area and have folks able to take their, even if they just want to get coffee in a roll or whatever, to be, be able to utilize those, you know, that sit down. I, I think it's the outside. It's just, it's eating outside that is, you know, inviting to folks. Um, and I wouldn't have a problem with that, but I definitely, and also for, for safety, uh, point of view. Uh, it was terrible. And I don't want to, I, I, I don't want to see that, that we put up with before. And I know we did it and I, and I'm glad that we, I, I think it actually kept some of the restaurants open and kept them, you know, as part of our merchants. And they're still here because of it. But I sure don't think that, um, I don't think they need it right now. Um, and if, if we had, you know, a participation like a Plaza type thing that they all, it was, it would be equal. We're not taking anybody's parking place and we're not hindering other businesses other than restaurants. I, I would be for it, but I'm definitely against this.
I think, um, I, you know, I think that in general, what I'm hearing is that we're supportive of creating outdoor space for downtown. I think the best way to, to go about that, we could really spend a lot of time, um, kind of going over that. And I would like to spend a lot of time. I don't think we have that time tonight. Um, given the rest of the agenda items and, and the, the hour that it is now, I would propose tabling this, um, and coming back to it.
I actually, I would like to, uh, two things, I think Jackie had a neat idea around the bell tower, but that's a different idea. It's not this that they brought forward. Um, and I do like the idea of atmosphere, but I, there's so many things that are challenging about it that I, I would, uh, I would like to move that we, uh, that we, uh, is this a, just an information or is this a request?
It's an authorization to proceed with the program.
I would like to move that we do not proceed with this program at this time.
Okay. Is that, so that's, is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
I'll just say, um, it, the Plaza thing's fine, but it isn't going to get any interest from the businesses that actually wanted you outdoor dining because you're not going to make really, I mean, the whole idea is having to sit down weight type atmosphere to do something. If you're just buying something to go, it takes, it detracts from the whole process of doing it. So I think you're going to see a lot less interest if that's the direction we're going to go. But this is my comment.
Okay. And, um, Dennis, when you say not at this time, do you want to see it brought back or?
No.
Not unless somebody.
Well, actually I read the recommendation, do not proceed with the program at this time. I just read it off of our options, option number. Actually, it's kind of funny. Option number two, the third one on the list.
Yeah.
Right. I can't count.
You did, just not in order. So that's, that's, that's what I, I read that I, uh, I do not proceed with this program.
However, if they're, they're welcome to proceed with another one. If somebody likes the idea of the, you know, the Plaza, uh, if, you know, or will help pursue it that way. That's, you know, up to them.
I, um, I think that this, I think this program has some really good potential. And I think that the idea between dining has some good potential. I know that there were pitfalls. I think that there is ways that it could be designed. Um, so that it is a community benefit and that it, it does work and that it is fair. Um, I would, I would be fine with saying not at this time. Let's revisit it in, you know, I don't know, Cleve, when, when could we revisit this? When, I don't know what the future agendas look like.
Well, it depends. I mean, what are you talking, you want to revisit it in a month, three months, a year? I mean,
Well, what, I know that, I know that workload is incredibly, um, challenging right now. And, and who, whose workload would this fall to? Terri's or Pierre's?
This is primarily me that did this one. Um, Pierre helped a little bit, but primarily me.
Who would be responsible for implementing the program if we moved forward with it?
If we moved forward with it, it would, uh, probably fall initially on Pierre and somewhat on.
If we moved forward with it, it would uh, probably fall initially on Pierre and somewhat on, on backup for encouragement. So.
Okay.
And design.
I mean, I would, maybe like three months, I, I would like to.
We have a motion on the floor. Are we gonna?
Okay, we have a, that's, that's where I stand on it. I would. So I, I may not agree with.
I hear what you're saying, Kara, but I look at like these other agenda and things that we have left over from last year and I don't know that this is a priority over getting some of our other stuff done.
I know.
That I want to put a time limit on it.
Okay.
So I think that if, 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 if a. If a future, if, if at some point somebody wants to bring this back on a future agenda item, then we can agendaize it.
That's what I said.
At a, at a, you know, at the request of a, of an individual.
Right, okay.
Council member.
That, that should be included as part of your motion so that we know that we can re, redo it.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, is that any, any, any council member at any time can request that the council bring back. Bring an item to the agenda by asking for a future agenda item, we all vote on.
Well, normally, once you've decided on an item, there's certain provisions to reconsider that um, item. And so I guess what I'm saying is, I would, if you want to have that opportunity to bring it back, you should include that in your memo that, or in your motion. That it can be brought back at a future date at the request of any councilor or something like that. So.
I, I'm just definitely, I'm just definitely against this presentation and I don't quite. Frank, honestly want to see it brought back. If they want to change it, you know, it would be brought back in a different program. I, that's my feeling.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Barelli?
Hi.
Councilmember No?
Hi.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
No.
Councilmember Thomas?
Hi.
So that is three eyes and two noes, three, two, four, do not proceed at this time.
Okay, thank you Regina. Um, all right, let's take a, a brief five minute break and we will meet back here at. Nine oh seven.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to uh, make a point of order or a request. I'd like to and see what council thinks, but I'd like to. Table the next item and we've been through some pretty. Large discussions on items and this is another one. Um, and I just feel like as it gets later into the night, um. You, it just devolves into a less of a, of a conversation, not, there's not a conversation, but I just think it deserves more time. And there's a natural impulse to move through some of these things as we get into the later hours. Um, I probably should have caught this earlier for the mayor, just to say this, there's a, a lot of stuff on this one.
But that's a strategic meeting beforehand.
Yeah, um, so it's up, totally up to everybody else, but I would just recommend we bring this one back at our next meeting, uh, and we move to the next item after.
I think for public sake, we could probably mention, Michael, that we've been, we've been meeting since three o'clock this afternoon.
That's the other part too. I mean, it's. It does take a toll on us as well as staff, uh, and everyone that's waiting. And I know there's a lot of people waiting right on twelve point six as well. So I'm just thinking about as this night progresses.
What does the council think? There's a motion. Dennis, I can hear you.
I, I'm good either way. Um, I could see this carrying on past ten o'clock, with everything we got here. Um, maybe not that far, but yeah. It's been, we've been here since what, three o'clock, like you said. Yep.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make the motion to, to move item, um. Twelve point five. Or excuse me, twelve point four.
Four.
Um, to our next meeting. Uh, Mo, I saw, I see Mona popping up. There'll be also, I'll have to take public comment, I get it.
Do we?
No, the council can continue this to a date certain, so I just wanted to confirm that. You can do that.
And, and Cleve, how does the next agenda look? Can we put this in on the next agenda?
Um, right now it looks okay. Yeah, I, I, I think it'll be fine.
Can we, can we say to the next, uh, this one, within the next thirty days? Next two agendas, in case gives Cleve some flexibility.
I'm good with that. I'll, I'll amend my motion.
It's not, it's not a time sensitive issue that things are popping up that we need to deal with here, so.
And Mona, that suffices as time certain if we say within thirty days?
Um, it, this is not an item that, well. For purposes of public hearings, we do have to define the specific dates, but this is, um, so. This is just seeking direction. Um, so it's not a zoning code modification, so we can just direct staff to bring it back at some point in February, for example.
Okay. I'll second that. Motion amended, right, for the, okay.
Correct.
Wait, so we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call vote?
Just, just for clarification, Mona, I want to make sure we say to the public, I see there are some people asking to speak. Because we've tabled it, we do not require public comment on this. Is that correct?
That is correct. You could ask if anyone has, but because you've continued it, um, it's not a requirement.
Would, um. Would it be problematic?
Sometimes what I have my agencies do is before they actually vote to continue it, they ask to see if anyone in the, in the public wants to. Um, make a comment right now, knowing that this is going to be continued and there will be a discussion in February.
I, I like that. Let's. Let's do that.
Okay.
Um, so with that, is there anyone that would like to comment on this item before we vote on whether or not we continue it?
Madam Mayor, I see hands raised. I will start with Sue. Go ahead and then mute yourself.
Hi, Sue Taylor. I've been here two hours to spend my three minutes to um, leave some comments on this and I would appreciate it if I could still do that. Um, do I have to wait now to see if you can let me do that, whether, and then you can continue it afterward?
Your clock is ticking.
Okay, so I figured that this city council is not going to move on the formula corporate businesses within the historic district. So I am, um, only focusing on the fast food restaurants in the CB, in the central business district. First, the existing fast food restaurants are grandfathered in, so hopefully the discussion would have been, um, many times it gets sidetracked about what's here and now and, and anything that. If you do modify this, an existing uh, fast food would be grandfathered and not moved. Um. The, um. There was the lawsuit against the fast food restaurant that was approved and it was, according to the lawsuit against sourdough. The judge stated that the courts give great difference to the um, agent, the. Agencies determinations. He stated that according, since neither the general plan or the zoning ordinance preclude fast food restaurants within the CBD. The zoning matrix attached to, uh, uh, appendix D to the. Development guide, which does not have the force of law, cannot be used to legally preclude approval of fast food restaurant in the CBD. If it is a city or community's desire to have a blanket prohibition on fast food restaurants in the CBD zone. A legislative fix is required and it's a simple fix. And after this lawsuit, you know, there's a, um. Discussion that happened after my comments at the economic, which I wasn't allowed to speak. But the, after the lawsuit, this, um, the CBD is pretty much open to fast food restaurants by right. Um, the conditional use permit was considered prior to the lawsuit. The judge basically said there's no protections in the, uh, general plan or the, or, uh, zoning ordinance. In the commercial zone and the highway commercial zone, after the eating and drinking establishment, there's in quotes excluding fast food restaurants. That's not what is in the central business district. Therefore, there's no requirement, if, if fast food restaurant is within that care category as defined by the judge. Therefore, fast food is allowed by right without a CBD within the community business district unless you fix that clause in that. So, um, mainly I think there's, you know, the city's not listening. I, I think, I don't know if it's not, you're not interpreting. I tried to explain the fast food restaurant. The definition within your own guide is different than the world's definition. So this is, there's no formula business. Definition within the fast food restaurant. So when you say this is a formula business to be, um, under the C. Conditional use permit, it's not, um, it's not there. So right now you're very, very vulnerable. And, and I was just asking for a small fix on that. And I'd love to, I would have liked to see you send it to the planning commission. I would love to work with them and try to just fix this little clause.
Thank you for your comment. Call in user one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So anyway, this item's going to be continued, so I just would love clarification if I speak to it now. Am I going to be restricted or not allowed to speak to it in the future?
No, you, you can speak both times.
Thank you. Okay, I find it absolutely, again, disgusting. The city of Placerville keeps going to the Placerville Economic Commission Committee, whatever they are. And not going to the planning commission. This absolutely has to go. This is a zoning issue. This absolutely has to go to the planning commission. So why does the city keep going to Peak for economic advice? On a crucial zoning issue. Without going to the planning commission? What kind of monkey court are you running here? And it pains me to have to say that. But some of you have to wake up. This is absolutely a zoning issue that needs to go to the planning commission, not your economic advisory committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Lishman?
Um, good evening again, Kathy Lishman. I would just like to say that. I hope there's no applications coming before the city to put a formula business in downtown because now is the time to discuss it. Not when you have an application before you. And the other thing I would like to say. I'm sorry that only the downtown business people got to weigh in on this and not the community at large. Thank you.
Ruth, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, um, I've been at this all day too, because the board of supervisors started at nine this morning, so a long day of. Listening to meetings, um, starting to glaze over a little bit, but, um, about formula. I honestly say I haven't read the staff report on this one and, but I will, I would like to say that the findings. Of this from the merchants about being against formula was the same as an earlier, um. Survey done by another organization, which says that the, uh, majority of the merchants are against it. And then I know that all the business owners were asked as well, and I'm also a business owner and out of. Supposedly around a hundred, although I doubt there are a hundred business owners, building owners on. Main Street because some owners own several buildings, but regardless, only eight responses came from building owners and, um. Six of the eight said that, uh, they were for the restrictions. And when they tour against it, I mean, wanting to restrict formula businesses on Main Street. So I, I think that, um. You know, the big boogeyman of how this is supposedly, if, if we, uh, restricted formula, gee, this would be so terrible for. Building owners because it would limit who they could rent to, it could limit, it might make their, the value of their business less. I think that's really a, a false issue. I really think, um, keeping the quaint character of downtown and not diluting it. With formula businesses actually gives my building more value. It's why I bought. And that's how I'd like it to stay. And I think that the, um. The statistics that came back proved that out. And I think those other business owners that didn't respond, probably it's not that big of an issue to them. They're not going to take the time to fill out the form and return it, so, um. I hope that you go along and follow what all of us who really value the downtown want. Which is to keep formula chain stores out and I would appreciate that. And I look forward to the future discuss, discussion on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Kirk Smith, go ahead.
I guess, um, the complexity to this issue is illustrated by an article that was wisely posted on a Facebook page last year. The article was about a shop that offered burritos in San Francisco. They had several locations. And they ran into a problem where they wanted to put one in North Beach. And they ran into a problem with the ordinance prohibiting, uh, this kind of establishment. So. It was unable to operate because it was a formula business. But that's not quite what was envisioned by that ordinance. It wasn't. The McDonald's or a Taco Bell, they would turn it into a kind of Coney Island atmosphere. So that became a problem about how you define it. What I think this illustrates that you're looking at this is not going after a more fundamental concern. Which is having downtown Placerville, Main Street declared in historic district. You've done it for other areas. Coloma Street. You have it on Cedar Ravine. But not Main Street. People come from all over the world because of what's old, not new in Placerville. So. It seems like instead of going after the formula business issue. You really ought to go after something much more fundamental that's been talked about for years. And that's having you look at having the Main Street declared in historic district. That's obvious. But it's something you had a conference, the staff put on several years ago, where. Major experts pointed out that when you have an historic district, the property values go up. The sales tax revenues go up. So it's in our interest to do that. And that's what seems to be the more appropriate thing for you to be looking at instead of formula businesses. Being your priority. Remember, some of you actually campaigned on historic preservation, that you wanted to preserve the historic features of town. So this is a good time to actually do that this year. That's what I'd urge you to look at next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Republican Women Federated, go ahead.
Um, yeah, this is Mandy Rodriguez again. Um, yeah, Kathy Lishman brought up a good point. I hope that there isn't a. Um, formula business, um. Preparing to submit to go on Main Street while this is, um. An open item, basically nothing has been, I just, I, I just see you guys kicking the can down the road on so many things. And it's like, you guys kind of needed to act on it, like. In, in, uh, Kirk Smith was right, you guys campaigned on a lot of these things. And it's like, you haven't really done any of them. It's just like, well, let's table that, let's discuss that, let's do a survey. I mean, their survey is pretty weak, but we all know it's the one thing. That everybody agrees on is that we don't want a bunch of chain stores down on Main Street. And I don't understand why it's so hard to put an ordinance out. To stop that. It's something everybody agrees on. It's like free money for somebody who's campaigning to, um, to be on the city council again. Like literally, somebody should, uh, make a motion and, and make it happen. It doesn't need to be kicked down the road anymore. And another thing, the way that the economy is going, the way that, you know, COVID has affected all these small businesses. It's really something that would protect this area in our local businesses. Um, there's a saying that I, I love, I love to say and it's called keep it small, keep it all. And, um, that's what you guys need to do. It's the one thing that everybody agrees on. Free money, free money for your campaign.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, there are no other hands raised?
Okay, so at this point, we have a first and a second to, um, continue this to a future meeting. However, the, um, one of the options. Of this item is to just direct staff to work with Peak to obtain additional information from property owners. Um, and I would add the public as well, which I feel like we could possibly just. Now that we've listened to public comment, take care of quickly, without a lot of discussion. With. With Dennis, I can't, I can't hear a word you're saying.
I think you'd have to open it back up to public comment again, honestly.
Could I?
I agree, because we said we're going to continue it. Now you said we're going to discuss it.
Is that, that's the case, Mona?
Yes, I would open it up to public comment in case someone was deferring their comment to the future.
Okay, well, then let's just stick with the original motion, and we have a first and a second on that. So let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Barelli. Sorry, what was that? Patty, can I get that one more time?
Hi.
Thank you. Councilmember No.
Hi.
Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Hi.
Councilmember Thomas.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 12.5. Adopt resolution approving the establishment of a youth NFL flag football program and approving a youth NFL flag football registration fee of $189 per player effective January 25th of this year and approving a youth NFL flag football early bird registration fee of 179 per player effective January 25th of this year. Carrie.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and hopefully with that language, we did squeak in for January 25th of 2022 for this. That's good. We got about two and a half hours left before I have to rewrite this. So yes, we're seeking approval to offer and organize youth NFL flag football program for this spring. And it's a really popular program that's been offered through other parks and recreation departments. Other agencies that I've worked with have had really successful flag football leagues, sometimes too successful, being from the Midwest, Notre Dame territory. We have too many kids. So what we're looking for is the opportunity to open up our spring programming for another type of sport. That's a team sport for kids, and we believe that this is a great one. My staff has done a lot of research on this program, and we're looking at offering it for children ages five to 14. And the cost, as you had read in the subject line, would be 189 and a $10, $10 off for early bird registration. And so that would include including in the cost of the league, each child would receive a set of flags, a reversible jersey, 10 practices, eight games. And each player on the first place team in each division would receive an award. We would be doing our practices at Lyons Park during the weekend games, be held at Eldorado High School on Saturdays. We did get approval, or we got advisory thumbs up from the Ruckin Park Commission on our December 15th meeting before Christmas. And we did do some fee comparisons, and we're right in line with the city of Folsom and Eldorado Hills. So it's a pretty much a no brainer for me. I think this is going to work out really well. The main thing that we had going into our basketball season was the fact that we had to deal with COVID regulations through the schools, and this one, since we're going to be outdoors, we see nothing but a green light for this sport, and we think it's really time for the kids to get out there and do some stuff. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
When, when will this season be?
We're going to be advertising it, and we're going to try to start it as soon as possible. We were going to be looking at trying to get that going in the next couple of weeks, but we do need to get a little bit of time to put it out there.
It doesn't conflict with anything going on at the high school?
No, no, we've already got, we've already got that, that kink worked out.
Well, you really must have shoehorned that in there.
Yes, we're hoping to get it in on January's meeting, but we had to move it back. Or I'm sorry, we were trying to get it in the first, the first meeting this, this year, but we pushed it back, so we're
I'm talking about the calendar at the high school.
Right.
The availability of the field, yeah.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to get it in, so we can get approval and move forward.
All right, seeing no other questions for Carrie, we'll open this up to public comment.
Public comment is now open for item 12.5. This is regarding the youth NFL flag football program. I see no hands raised, Madam Mayor. Sorry, there is one. Sue Rodman, go ahead.
I think congratulations to Terry. This is a great idea to get kids so they can have something to do outdoors, have a little fun, and have something to play. So great deal. Thanks.
Thank you, Sue. All right, with that, we will close public comment. And bring it back to council. Yes, Dennis.
Is this, is this mixed, or is it? Is it, is it girls and boys, boys and girls, just boys?
It's, it's whoever wants to participate.
All right, do they get to form their own teams? Is it a draft type of a thing, or how does that work?
We're going to see what our, what our interest is, and then we're going to follow the most appropriate team creation strategy from, from the amount of interest we get.
Imagine NFL flag football program has some guidelines and all that stuff.
They do, and they've got insurance requirements and all sorts of things like that. So we've, we've jumped through those hoops already.
I think it's a great idea. I do, thanks.
Yes, Patty.
Are we ready for a motion?
Let's do it.
I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution and including one, two, and three as presented to us.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Barelli.
Hi.
Councilmember No.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Saragosa. Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Councilmember Thomas.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 12.6, informational report update on short-term rentals and ordinance revisions. And Mr. Rivas.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. To give a little history, on April 6th of last year, the planning commission adopted a resolution that modified the list of special temporary uses that may be administratively issued to include short-term rentals in the highway commercial zone. Following the planning commission's action, an appeal was filed. And then in May of 2021, the council considered the appeal and took public comment. And at that meeting, the council granted the appeal and overturned the decision of the planning commission. And we've attached the minutes of that meeting reflecting your action in your staff report. The direction of council was that staff was to come back with an ordinance to address short-term rentals throughout the city in six months. However, due to extreme workload issues, staff has not been able to prepare a draft ordinance as promised. Currently, the department is experiencing staffing issues due to illnesses, the retirement of our city planner. In addition, we've had large projects, including state mandated projects that have taken precedence, those including, of course, you would be aware of the housing element update, the adoption of the organic waste reduction ordinance, and the implementation of the Mallard, Middletown, and Placerville Armory affordable housing projects. And of course, our Placerville, the Mackinac Hotel. And we also have revisions that are still due for our accessory dwelling unit ordinance in accordance with the new state regulations that we still need to do. And of course, we still want to analyze and implement then SB 9 and SB 10 that needs our attention. So the staff's recommendation in May was to allow for the temporary use permit to serve as a bridge, if you will, as was done with the central business district. Until we can adopt the more formal changes to our ordinance, the staff will continue to work on this and bring back an ordinance as soon as possible. Because it will be part of our zoning ordinance, it would first go before the planning commission for their review and recommendation prior to coming forward then to the council. So given that requirement, we're probably looking at late March or April before we can actually reach this point. Staff has discussed, have, has had discussions with our city attorney, both Mr. Morris and myself. And she has other potential options that may provide for a more expeditious means of allowing for short-term rentals throughout, through the use of a temporary use permit to allow short-term rentals in, in some of our other commercial zones that permit lodging facilities such as motels and hotels by right. And these zones would include the central business district where we already allow it through a special temporary use permit, our commercial zone, and then our highway commercial zone. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have at this time.
Questions for Pierre?
I don't have questions for Pierre. I'd like to hear the options that, that were brought up that the city attorney said we have.
Well, as Mr. Rivas has just indicated, the one that I think everyone's most familiar with is just doing ordinance change, an ordinance that's introduced, that does take the most amount of time because it goes to the planning commission, comes back to the council for two readings, and the ordinance is not effective until 30 days after. So the alternative is, and we have case law that repeatedly embodies this concept, which is a local agency like a city, for example, gets deference with respect to how it interprets its codes. And the council could determine to redefine or amend the definitions, a few of the definitions in the municipal code to include for short-term rentals in the commercial zone and establish parameters for what it would like to do. If you wanted to do that, that would be much more swift in execution. It would take a lot less staff time. And it would be a way to effectuate this.
Thank you, Mona.
No, I'll just state, because I know this isn't on the agenda for today, for us to be able to make a motion on it. This is an informational item, but I would be happy to bring this up in future agenda items when we get to that position, to that spot.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and open this up to public comment.
Public comment is now open for item 12.6. This is the informational report on the short-term rentals and ordinance revisions. We'll start with Ruth. Go ahead.
Okay, I have to admit, I'm a little bit confused, but I was very involved in the appeal in front of the city on this Orchard Lane. And I guess what I'm trying to understand is you all made a a finding on that appeal, and you supported that appeal. And now, if I understand correctly, what staff is supposed to do and come back in six months due to workload, they haven't been able to, and I understand that, and you know, have compassion about that. But what you're looking to do is to address this issue in another manner, which would potentially reverse the appeal that was made. And I don't know, that's so maybe Steph could help me understand that. I don't know if that's really, it's disturbing to have spent $400 and to have gone through an appeal and then find out that that could be reversed because you're going to, I mean, I know you needed to make a long-term plan for short-term rentals, which you hadn't. And you were waiting to do that, and that's why this one couldn't squeak through because you didn't have that in place. So, but now you're finding a loophole, so you don't have to have it in place, but you're going to still let these things go through? Anyway, that's what I'm trying to understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Julie Robinson, go ahead.
Thank you. My focus has always been about affordable housing, and this last year, we saw three to four times the typical inflation rate with rentals. So yeah, rentals went up 11%. And you know, a lot of people have been struggling, and the place that they're struggling the most is their rent. So again, this sideways kind of allowing Airbnbs, et cetera, is going to hurt the those on the lowest end of the income spectrum, and that's really seems so unfair. The rich making money and people who just want to live being pushed out of their homes. So I think this is a really bad idea if we care about our community. I think people first, housing first, before profits of people who own multiple properties. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Amber Ross, go ahead. Madam Mayor, Amber Ross is in the same situation that David Ross was in. Could I promote her to panelists so she can speak? Thank you.
Hi, Amber, are you there?
Yes, David's actually.
Hi, sorry, we're just juggling a baby. I just, I quickly prepared something to
David, you're frozen up.
With me via email because I've just been a little in the dark since our last meeting in April, when the planning commission originally approved our zoning interpretation, and then May, when the item was originally appealed. The last information I had received was in that, in that meeting from staff that ordinance would be completed in September, October of 2021, and this matter would then come back before you. It was my understanding that the reason the appeal passed was because that an ordinance would be completed and better rules would be in place to govern short-term rentals. Since then, about eight months have gone by, and what I've gathered from the planning department is that there's been zero progress on the ordinance, and that's no fault to the planning department. I understand there have been many COVID-related health and safety issues to deal with, and the loss of staff, as Pierre had just mentioned. So with that, I would like to humbly request to bring back this item for reconsideration and temporarily approve the zoning interpretation as the planning commission did in April until the ordinance is complete. Just a quick update on the progress of the buildings. As I described in April, in the April meeting, the four units were in extreme disrepair and some less than livable condition. Since then, we have gotten all of our appropriate permits and have done a complete remodel of the units, including a new roof, gutters, windows, energy efficient heating and cooling, et cetera, et cetera. The interior of the units are absolutely beautiful, and three of them are completely furnished and ready to rent. I had sent some of the council members photos, and I think that you guys had received that. On this project so far, with hopes to share this now restored 1940s building with people visiting Placerville. I invite all the city council members and staff to tour the property. Anyone speaking against the project, I welcome you as well. I'm very proud of what we have built and will make myself available to show off our hard work to anyone that is interested. If anyone would like to contact me, my email address is rossdavidn@gmail.com. And my phone number is 805-324-2798. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
All right, we'll take public comment from Liu Han. Go ahead.
Hello, yes. So I have concerns regarding the short-term rentals. I personally have been told that short-term rentals by the planning commission, and more specifically, Airbnbs are illegal within Placerville city limits. And so I have some questions that I would like to propose to council. What is the basis of the city's position that this is illegal, as it is currently allowed in Eldorado County? And the public is being told that it is illegal within city limits. I'm concerned with the city's basis for what the public is, has been continuously told, specifically in regard Specifically in regards to the housing element that was released in August of two thousand twenty-one. That specific document had stated throughout. That, as quoted, it says here, that the city of Placerville should consider a ban on short term rentals within residential zones. It also went on to say that this, they recommended that the city have short term rentals. Let me, uh, short term rentals will either be not permitted or only permitted if the unit is owner occupied. And the article went on to say as well that the work has not been completed, but is expected to be completed by the end of two thousand twenty-one. So I can sympathize with the Ross's and their frustration on the delay of that. So it seems to me that the city would currently agree that it is not illegal in city limits. But is actually proposing to make it illegal according to the document. So I'm, I'm very concerned about the fact that the city's documented records have some pretty big inconsistencies on what. Their interpretation is, is currently and what they are actually intending to propose. On a side note, I did previously email all of city council in October, which I was thankful Dennis Thomas did email me back and which I requested. With a list of twenty other locals that were interested in hosting a workshop. To have a more public discussion in this issue. For the reason being, as earlier mentioned by Kathy in oral communication. She stated that she was frustrated as she often feels that public comment is often allowed after an item has been developed. And not beforehand. That is my concern with this issue is that I feel that a workshop would really greatly benefit the community because I do think there is a lot of public interest in this. Specific topic. I've also reached out to the State Department for Housing Policy Analyst. And they've actually provided me direct information that has a lot more flexibility for the ADUs. And also short term rentals that I think I would be happy to share with what I found. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Laurel, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Congratulations for hanging in there. I can understand the community's concern about short term rentals in residential areas. That's not what this property is zoned. We've submitted a letter to you in support of reconsideration for this project. It, and described it as a round peg in a round hole. I honestly feel that this is highest and best use. This is a young family with a young man that was born and raised here. And their intention is to bring an additional destination to keep to the end of a community that. Vitally needs revitalization. So I would really encourage you to support reconsideration and approve this project. Thank you.
James Webb, go ahead.
Oh, my name is James Webb. I am a resident in Placerville city limits. I have some concerns about short term rentals as well because. I tried to get a bed and breakfast conditional use permit and. I was, I had some roadblocks. There was basically. In order for you to get that permit, your house or your residence has to be fifty years old. Or older with historical reference. My house is forty-six years old, so. There's some inconsistencies with the general population. With short term rentals, conditional use permits, there's allowances for you to make. Accommodations and the current planning commission is unwilling to make. The necessary provisions to do what some people in the community want. There is. Lots of. Policies and procedures in there that protect the community, make sure that the community around. The residents in question are being protected. So I'd like to see more or less a citywide. Kind of guidance from you guys so more people can do this legally. Thank you.
Mandy, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I've had questions too, and I've called down. Downtown and asked, you know, what does hosted mean? Can I get a specific definition? And I ha, I've yet to been able to get that from anybody. You know, it's so vague in this background where. This is the proposal from June twenty seventeen and it says. The zoning ordinance does not specify whether renting, whether the renting of not more than one room. Permit short term lodging accommodations for transient guests less than thirty days. But like, what is that room? Like, if, I, I, I mean. I. Lived in Tahoe for twenty-five years. I re, I had a cleaning business up there twenty-five years ago. This was when people used to just put a sign on their, they'd nail it, a piece of wood to their deck. You know, up at Heavenly and rent the place out. So like, I've seen vacation rentals. I know. That there are, you know, that, I know the problems that South Lake Tahoe has had. I lived there. I saw the evolution of it. But, um. If you were to, those were whole houses that were bought for the specific purpose to make it at Airbnb. I feel like the majority of the people that are in the city of Placerville that would like to do an Airbnb and could really. Have great Airbnbs like David and Amber's Airbnb's that they, they have up here. Like, there should be room for that. We have this great hotel that's going up. Over by Smith Flat up there that you guys just approved. You're gonna have a venue there. Why not offer more? Options for lodging. Airbnbs are great for that. People could stay right off of fifty and drive up to Sierra Tahoe. It's a good thing. If it's a hosted, if it's hosted, whether it be a detached garage or part of a house. And the owner is onsite, I don't see why that is an issue, especially if that owner has off street parking. Plenty of parking and is there to actually give them an experience. I think it's such a great thing and you should definitely go check out David. They are, they're awesome and I would ten times rather stay there than at a hotel. I mean, the Carrie House is great, but it's not, it's like staying in someone's house, right? So please consider this and, and work on this ordinance as soon as possible. I know you guys are busy, but it's a really important thing to everybody around here.
Thank you, Mandy.
Sue Rodman, go ahead.
Um, on the Airbnb, Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. Homeowner in Placerville. I have seen what has happened at South Lake Tahoe. I have friends who've lived in South Lake Tahoe. And their neighborhoods have been absolutely ruined by Airbnbs. I think that what I'm hearing about something that's in the business district in the highway corridor. That where there is somebody on site, that this is not just the whole thing is rented out short term. That would be one thing, but I absolutely think our ordinance right now that. Eliminates the possibility of having Airbnbs in the residential districts is a very good thing. In South Lake Tahoe, when they have Airbnbs that have been rented out. They end up with the party group coming in. They end up with not knowing who their neighbors are anymore. They end up with having their neighborhood coalition or cohesion just ruined, shredded. So I really think we need to be very, very careful with Airbnb type things in the city of Placerville. What we really need here is housing so that the people who work in Placerville can afford to live in Placerville. Because there's, we have too many people who work here and have to commute to come up to their jobs. They should, they would like to be able to live in Placerville. But they can't find housing. So our affordable housing is the problem. And I would like to see us concentrate on that and not on Airbnbs. If these people have four units. That they're ready to rent, why don't they rent them to people who work and would like to live in Placerville? That's my comments.
Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
Good evening again. I have to say that I agree with Sue Rodman about what she said. And vacation rentals have really overrun Tahoe. I know that firsthand. Are these owners trying to get special favor? Did they know the risks when they bought the property? There's a housing shortage and we need to take care of our citizens before we promote Airbnbs or short term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Nicole Godberg, go ahead.
Hi, this is Nicole Godberg and I'm speaking as a Placerville resident and not a member of the planning commission. I would like to see the city follow the standard process of putting a short term vacation rental ordinance before the planning commission. Followed by a first and second reading of an ordinance by the city council. I understand the frustration with the schedule by the property owners. But I really think we that we should follow the process, even if that takes a while due to limited staff availability. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Okay, we have Amber Ross. Amber, if this is you, you do have three minutes. If it's David, David, you already spoke. I'll go ahead and unmute now.
Hello, sorry about that. It was David before. My name is Amber Ross. I'm David's wife and a local Realtor. We moved back to Placerville, David's hometown in two thousand seventeen after college to be closer to family and to. Start a family of our own, obviously. We live right off of Main Street, only a couple of minutes from our project because we love this town. I think what we are asking is being overanalyzed. Our property is zoned highway commercial, not residential. This building was originally built as a motel in nineteen, in the nineteen forties. And over the years has been used as a, as commercial businesses and then transferred, transitioned to residential units. The former, the former use of the buildings as residential units was a nonconforming use for this zone. These units are tiny, under four hundred square feet, not suited for long term use. What we are asking is the optimal use for this property and will greatly benefit the city. That is in desperate need of overnight accommodations for people visiting Placerville. A few weeks ago, we listened to the proposed hotel.
Amber, you're frozen.
Accepted with open arms. We are a local family with roots in this community and have. And having to jump through hoops to essentially do what this property was meant for just seems unfair. With that being said, I would like to echo the words of my husband and kindly ask you to reconsider your decision in May and allow us to operate our small business. We have built something beautiful and it is our contribution to the improvement of Broadway area. That desperately needs it. I welcome all of you and the community listening to, toward the property. You can Google my name, Amber Ross Realtor. And my contact info will come up. Please contact me and we'll be happy to show you around. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I see no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Yes, Mona?
Mayor Taylor, I wanted to clarify some, some points that were raised in the public comment. First of all, this item has been agendized such that even though it's informational, that the council can provide direction to the staff. Secondly, I wanted to remind everyone that we are not addressing any specific project. We're not doing a rehearing today. We're not reconsidering the decision that was brought before you for the short term rental. Last spring and summer. This is a standalone item that addresses short term rentals in the city more holistically. And to obtain information as to how the council would like to proceed with that. Additionally, any changes to the zoning code would also necessarily go to the planning commission. The alternative that was proposed to you was rather than doing a standalone ordinance that addressed short term rentals. That we do a definitional change that was so much more straightforward and would take less staff time. And to really get to the heart of it, I wave an example. Chapter ten dash five dash fourteen of the city zoning code addresses the central business district zone. And in there, one of the permitted uses is hotels and motels. So one of these, the alternative straightforward solution would be hotels, motels, and for example, short term rentals. Again, it would be limited to that specific zoning district, but in terms of. Staff time, it would be significantly reduced and there would be some option to move forward, although that's a policy decision for all of you to make. This approach would not reduce or eliminate any of the housing stock because it doesn't impact the residential zones. Again, we're just talking about the central business district commercial zone. And the city could determine and make a finding that doing so enhances economic development as an example. So I just wanted to make those points and if you have any further questions, I'm available to answer those for you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes, Jackie?
I'll start with some comments. I made this motion last year, so I'd like to just explain that. I very specifically said last year, I did not want to overturn the planning commission's decision, but was told that was the only option. To ask for it to be brought back as a whole for the city. It, you know, we thought we could get it done in six months and it has been eight months now and it does seem. Very unfair to the people who are waiting for a decision. You know, we say we can get it, maybe March or April. What if something else comes up and we can't get it done for another six, eight, ten months? We're not doing very good business then. And for those reasons, you know, I was supporting a definitional change because. You know, we have to make some decisions and this would be temporary only. We'd be issuing something temporary to the end of the year till we can get something done. With looking at the whole city. Thanks.
Can, can we issue a definitional change that's temporary only?
The, the temporary nature of it would be, it would be superseded by anything that the council would adopt in its place in the future.
Would those be grandfathered in by, by virtue of already being now?
If we do have, if we do have a use, but remember that you, you. You are in charge of how we define it, but if we do have a property that is then allowed to be used as a short term rental. During that time, it would be continued to be allowed to be used in that way.
Yeah, if I can add some, some clarification, Mayor, if I may. I think what we were looking at doing when we're talking about making some definitional changes. Is we don't have a definition of lodging. We do have, we do have a definition for hotels and motels, six units or greater. So we have a gray area then, if you're below that number of units. Then what do we call that? Well, it's lodging, but we don't have a definition for lodging and then that's not a use that's specified is. Either by right or by spec, by conditional use permit in any of our zones. So we have three of our six commercial zones explicitly allow hotels and motels by right. And it's in those zones, the staff, staff feels that it's most appropriate. To allow our more generalized lodging facilities. And so that would include then short term rentals. As the Rosses pointed out, again, I don't want to get into the weeds on a particular property. As the Rosses pointed out, again, I don't want to get into the weeds on a particular property, but that particular property is zoned highway commercial. They bought what was formerly a motel. Unfortunately, some of the other structures that were on the site that were units have been long since removed. If you remember, there was an old historic house on the site, could have been converted into two units. They would have had their motel if those units were still there and we wouldn't, wouldn't really be here trying to, you know, force-feed an individual project to serve an individual lot. But I think that's a good fix. Staff is highly in favor of, of clearing up that fix and having the lodging definition so that those zones that allow a hotel and motel by right would of course allow other types of lodging under six units. We have, staff has no intention of allowing them in residential zones. As was stated by some of the speakers, we have an extreme housing shortage. We have an extreme situation of unaffordability with housing. As, as we all know, since we just recently adopted our housing element. A lot of the ADUs that we're developing, now those ADUs get a break. They get reduction or they pay no impact fees, traffic fees, water hookup fees, sewer fees and the like for housing, not for lodging. And so I want to emphasize that and that's why we're trying to more focus in on doing a definitional change. If we do a definitional change, it is a change of the code. It would go to the Planning Commission first and then come to council. The only option where we weren't going to have to go to the, where we would be a little shorter would be again, if it's a modification to what we would consider a special temporary use permit. I hope that clarifies a little bit for you.
Just a comment on that, though. I wasn't under the impression that the only thing we were going to do was to just grant this conditional, well, to potentially go and just do commercial zones. The idea that we sent back was that we would have us a citywide proposal. And so I didn't know that staff had made the, already the, the decision that we weren't going to do anything in a residential zone such as a hosted, potentially a hosted Airbnb, for lack of a better term. So I just want to get clarification on that because I still like to see something, at least look at that. Because let's not kid ourselves, you're not going to shoehorn somebody into like renting in a room to somebody long-term versus them doing an Airbnb. And we talked about personal property rights at the very beginning when we, in our three o'clock session and getting the highest use of personal property. So I want to be consistent about as a council, what we're saying when we look at this issue as well.
Sure, and I can, and I can certainly respond to that. And staff agrees with private, private property rights. And that's, that's the situation I, I think we see with the highway commercial zone. That is a commercial zone that allows commercial uses. And one of those commercial uses is lodging. When we're talking about residential use, a residential use typically does not allow commercial uses, with the exception of a bed and breakfast, which has a whole litany of special standards that must be met, including that, you know, the age of the house and all those things. We have a very special section of our code that addresses bed and breakfast and bed and breakfast should not be confused with a short-term rental. And some of our residential zones have what I would call a relic. It was back in the time when cities and counties would regulate what constitutes a family in terms of stating how many people could live in a house. Well, laws have changed now where cities and counties aren't permitted to do that anymore. And we have an old relic in our code in our residential zones that states the renting of one room. And so staff has, staff has been interpreting that to mean is a private property owner can rent that, can rent a room in their house. And we're not going to be concerned with how long they're staying. And so that's sort of a de facto short-term rental in an individual room in somebody's house.
But we don't enforce underground regulations, do we? I mean, we have to vote on something as a council to actually make that law.
Yes, so we would clarify that. So we would actually create a process where if somebody wants to then have a short-term rental that's hosted and they're renting a room in their house where they live, we want to permit that. We would just have to create the administrative permitting process so that the city can then get the transient occupancy tax, make sure they have a business license and meet certain regulations that be a short-term rental. So that, that is something that staff is looking at bringing back because it's sort of already in our code.
Well, either it is or it isn't.
Well, it kind of is, but we don't define the term of stay.
But that's not how law works. You either have a regulation or you don't.
Well, the, the point is, Michael, that it needs to be clarified.
Right, but I'm just saying, we're not, are we, are we regulating something right now that's not currently in, in law?
Well, I believe we are. Well, no, I think it is in law, but it needs to be clarified further. In, in other words, let me put it this way. It, it's not, it's like we have a number of things that may be in there, but we're not happy with the way they're being, that, that we have to enforce them.
So I guess, I guess, I guess I'm just saying, it's this council that sets the policy and I feel like we're, staff's getting ahead on this one, so.
Not, not at all. We, we recognize that we need to bring back that, that residential short-term rental position for you to consider and that will be the council's decision.
Yeah, that is a very clear ambiguity in our code currently. And I think it stems from when cities used to be able to regulate the number of persons living in a house.
All right, so are we talking about informational report and then considering?
Directions to staff?
Directions staff.
For the proceed.
Yeah.
So, yeah, with the option that we could make a small definitional change.
So the, I think the idea is that we, we instruct staff to come back with that future agenda. Is that correct that we?
I, I just wanted a quick clarification. I was a little bit confused because Mona had talked about a definitional change and then Pierre talked about maybe a special temporary permit option. Are there two options available to us or am I confused about that?
No, you're not confused about that. And first of all, Councilmember Saragoza, I want to apologize because I think I contributed to kind of getting ahead of the council with respect to restrictions in residential. That was my misunderstanding. I think that the biggest direction that staff is looking for is either the council wishes to direct staff to take a holistic view of short-term rentals in the city. And that means every, you know, zoning designation definitions, bring it all back, at which point given staff's existing workload is going to take a while. And it's not going to come back as quickly as if, as, but, but the alternative to that is to make a definitional change, whether it's adding, for example, the term lodging and defining that to mean whatever it is and putting it in distinct zoning areas or possibly even opening up the definition of a short-term, a temporary use permit to allow these as long as, for example, they're not greater than 30 days. We would give you options. These have not been fleshed out. We're, we're waiting to see what the council wants to do before, you know, the definitional options are presented to you.
That answer your question, Dennis?
I know that was supposed to clarify it and it did at one point and then it went somewhere else.
Okay, so there's two, there's two questions before you. One is, are you interested in kind of a stopgap approach, which provides something much sooner for the community and for the Planning Commission and the council to decide, but isn't going to address every conceivable instance where this, where short-term vacation rentals are addressed? But, but you can narrow, you know, your focus to, for example, highway commercial or wherever the specific areas of concern are. Or do you want to wait and have staff bring back something that we do workshops on and you get a further input and it's a much more holistic change that changes the zoning maps and the definitions and everything? And it's a standalone ordinance that addresses how you're going to deal with short-term rentals, Airbnbs, all of it.
I would be in favor of what Mona just expressed, which would be a temporary fix in our commercial zone and something that would come back at a later date that would give us a holistic approach to this. As long as that's not a fait accompli with what we would move forward with tonight.
In commercial zone and highway, all commercial zones or commercial zone or highway commercial zone or?
Well, I think they would bring a map back that we could have, make better, better decision on that at the point. We're asking staff to come back with that, with that recommendation. Is that correct?
That's how I would see it, but.
Right. With the recommendation of the, the, the change in, starting to get tired here, the change in, the adjustment in the definition of lodging.
So is this something that you want to have come back to the council? Or do you want to give a little bit more concrete direction to staff so that they can present a potential ordinance to the Planning Commission and get the ball rolling?
I would like to see this, I'd like to see this, the way you stated it at first, that we attack this now and, and let's get the ball rolling. It's just been going on way too long and if we have a chance to do it properly and still hasten it, I, I would like to go on that, go that route.
I don't understand what you just said. Are you, are you saying you want to do the, 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 the adjustment to the definition? And, and for now, and then move forward with it at a future day?
Yes.
So.
Let me, let me try this. I would make a motion that we, that staff move forward with what our city attorney has laid out in terms of a potential definitional change and I believe highway and commercial zones and that they continue to work on a holistic short-term rental policy for the entire city.
That involves a lot of community input and all.
That involves community input and, and Planning Commission and everything else at that point.
And I just really quickly, just to, again, not to defeat the purpose. If, if we're going to be, you know, tasking staff to do both things, then you might as well have them do the thing that takes the longer and is holistic. But if you do the short-term solution that Councilmember Saragoza has just moved on, give it a little bit of time and see how it's progressing, right?
And then, no, that's, that's actually not what I'm ascribing to.
Oh, okay.
Because I don't want it to be a fait accompli that that's all we're going to end up doing. We said we were going to have a conversation about a state or citywide SRT policy. However, we know that there's a donut, there's a donut hole of an issue that affects people in the highway commercial zone that we hadn't expected to take this long. And so we're looking for a definitional change now so that we can address that donut hole and then come back to address the entire city at a later date. So it isn't about just, let's just wait to see how this plans out. It's about fixing that donut hole and then moving forward with a greater policy. At least that's how I see it.
I.
Go ahead.
Okay, I agree with what Michael's saying. The only, the only issue that I see, not, not really an issue, but the reality is, is that, that timeframe between the donut hole, you call it. I don't want to get too stuck on that name, but the, the definitional change and is, is not defined and I'm okay with that because really you have to talk to Pierre about what's on his plate and what we need to take off his plate to accomplish any of this. And that's part of our whole strategic plan and process is to, is to make sure that we're not, you know, you know, that, you know, it's a zero-sum game. So if we give this to him, what is he going to take off? And one of those are estate mandated, like right now, we're still working on arena numbers. And that's, you know, we don't even want to go down that road. But all that is taken into consideration and that's why we're doing this today.
But didn't Mona say that we specifically address, and I think Michael just said it too, highway commercial?
Just highway commercial.
If that's the choice that we want to make, I.
That's, that's an instruction that we give staff. I think that Michael's giving staff to bring back that one issue on highway commercial and that definition.
Or for clarification of, I may, we originally talked about those commercial districts that allow hotels and motels by right. That would include the Central Business District, the Commercial District and the Highway Commercial, so.
I second what Mike said.
Because it's lodging.
Yes. Yes. For clarify, yes.
And I'll second it, if that's what he said.
I, I've got some comments I want to make. You know, I feel like this item and then the earlier item we had under 12, I feel like we're really put in a position of kind of putting a stop on business, which is not a comfortable position to be in at all. It's, I'm not enjoying, enjoying these items. But, you know, in, in terms of this one, the intention of the council, the way I saw it, was that we would take a holistic look at this, at this issue and provide, you know, guidance that property owners could rely on. And there are 55 homes in the highway commercial district. They're currently, you know, being lived in. And my concern, and if we were going the route of having an ordinance, we could put in things like we did with the cannabis business where, you know, maybe we limit them to five to start and reevaluate and see how it goes. My concern is if we make this change, we're going to see a ton of investment into those 55 units in the highway commercial zone. Without, without taking that holistic look. And this isn't about, you know, the, the project that was brought up. That looks like a great project, but I'm more concerned at what the ramifications will be with this change, you know, throughout the community widespread. And we can't, we can't take it piece by piece. It just doesn't work that way. We don't, you know, we, we have to make a policy issue. But at, at the same time, it was not our intention, you know, when we rejected or when we upheld the appeal, to leave people in limbo as they pursue their dreams and their businesses. And that is, you know, because this is taking so long, that is essentially what we're doing. So.
Can I ask for a clarification from, from Pierre on the 55 homes that you're talking about and what ramifications it would have on those?
Sure.
So, so basically, if you have existing residential uses in a highway commercial zone, those are what we would call legal non-conforming uses. And so I'll look at the example of the Ross's property and I'm going to do so because that entire area is highway commercial, including the home, the other homes that's, that are near it. So it's sometime in the past, the city adopted a general plan and designated those properties highway commercial that has goals, objectives and policies regarding the development of those properties. And then the city went a little further and implemented the general plan through its zoning ordinance and then zone those properties highway commercial. And so through council policy by the adoption of general plan and then the adoption through ordinance is telling the world that these properties are for commercial uses and that hopefully the non-conforming uses over time will go away. And then the uses will come in and be conforming and not non-conforming. And I'm putting that out there is because that's, that is something that cities and counties do as they grow. You have areas that maybe were previously residential and as your commercial cores grow, then they get rezoned. They get a new land use designation placed on them. They get rezoned. The property owner is allowed to engage in that existing prior use, but probably cannot expand. Because the hope is through our policy as a city, that eventually those uses will be commercial. And so I think if it is the intent of the, of the council to look at these 55 units, if there's a cluster of them or they do what you would consider constitute a neighborhood. Well, in that case, I think the council would then give. Well, in that case, I think the council would then give direction to staff to initiate a general plan amendment and a rezone back to residential to preserve them. Because as long as they're commercial, we're basically telling the world that it's the city's desire for commercial uses to exist on these properties. Does that help?
And I, and I fully agree with that and, you know, I I think that lodging is a perfectly acceptable use for the highway commercial zone. And if we were not in a severe housing shortage, I would be, you know, all for just opening it up. However, I think that it would probably behoove the community to have a little bit more foresight and possibly ease that transition. I'm just, I, I just worry that if we do this on a definitional basis, it's going to be a very rapid change. That will be difficult for the community.
I'll just say, you know, I, if we had a large body of water next to us or a big snowy hill mountain behind us, we might be like South Lake Tahoe or Mendocino or some other areas. I mean, we're not gonna have, we're not gonna turn into South Lake Tahoe with Airbnbs. It's just not. It's just not gonna happen. I mean, we have to also be realistic about what our geography and what our area is. I'm not saying that there won't be more that pop up if they were in that area, but it's not the same type of draw that they're gonna have to some of those other destinations that have seen, you know, SRTs go ballistic in their areas.
Look how long it took us to get a hotel, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we can't even get a Trader Joe's.
Yeah, we can't get Trader Joe's. I, I agree and I, I understand Kara's caring about the, you know, the, the homes that are there, but I too, I just don't think it's gonna happen. I, I think that Mr. Ross is in a really, it's a different environment in that as much as that those units that he has, and I did view the pictures and he's done a beautiful job on them. And it was a motel at one time. So that kind of changes the dynamic from, you know, a, a person taking an, an older home or a home and, you know, turning it into something like he's proposing.
And Patty, I totally agree, but that is one specific project and not necessarily what they're all, you know, what, what the full scale is gonna look like.
So this, this is, this is, in my opinion, this is a prime example of the challenges we have, being a small town with limited staff and limited budget. And our inability to really fund all the positions that we need along the way as well as meet all the state mandates. And so, you know, this is a, this is a stopgap and it is an opportunity to to move this forward. I think at any time we could say, you know what, this has got, this, this got a little out of control, like Kara said. If that, if what Kara proposed actually comes to fruition and we start seeing this, we hit the brakes.
We can stop it.
How, how, how would that mechanism work?
That would be a moratorium on, on a, on those. I'm seeing, I'm looking at Mona, she's like.
Oh, no, no, and these, this is just a couple more things for your consideration. I've been taking notes while you all have been talking and I certainly understand that there's a lot of angst about kind of a, a global ordinance at some point in the future, which makes sense because there's a lot of other issues that come into place where it's just based on my notes, you might want to talk about location restriction, whether it's going to be by right or subject to a conditional use permit, whether they're gonna need a business license, other restrictions, file an application to ensure that transient occupancy taxes are collected, how many consecutive calendar days, parking requirements, occupancy restrictions, violations that result in suspension of a permit, for example, numerous code enforcement. So I, I appreciate all of that. The point here was to provide some more immediate changes. And if there's heartburn about changing the definition of lodging to include the allowance for this, the other alternative would be to define a temporary use permit to allow these kinds of uses, again, in the central business, commercial, highway, commercial with a business license and a temporary use permit. And again, you have a little bit more control over that. And when you have a temporary use permit and a business license, you're not giving them land use rights, right? It's basically a short-term opportunity to carry out a business activity and make sure that they're complying with the balance of the city's code. So that's another alternative.
If I could add to that, I'm sorry, Mona, a temporary use, that special temporary use permit is only good for one year. It has to be renewed each year. Is that correct?
Yes, according, with our, consistent with our existing code, correct. But you can decide that you want to add additional factors to this. Say that this is an allowable use under a temporary use permit. They have to apply for a permit, not longer than a year. They have to get a business license and, and maybe that's the approach that we take in the short term.
I would definitely feel more comfortable with that and I, you know, I, I, I don't want to hold up projects, like that's not, that's not my goal. I just want to be really thoughtful and make sure that it's, you know, we, it's designed in a way that is not going to, you know, be really harmful to neighborhoods and communities.
But we don't have any regrets later on.
But I'm also sympathetic to, you know, the realities of our, our staffing and everything that's on on their plate. So that's something that I would feel more comfortable with.
You want to withdraw and restate, Michael? Or, or is this?
Would I be restating that we have the ability to add a moratorium to this? Is that what I'm adding?
I, I guess that we're, you know, there's, there's, go ahead, Mona.
That's, I mean, I'm fine adding that.
I think, I think the shift was potentially directing staff to bring an ordinance to the planning commission and the city council that makes a definitional change to a temporary use permit, special event permit that allows short-term rentals in zones in which motels and hotels are operated, subject to a business license.
I'm like lost now, I'm sorry. Somebody else, I'll withdraw my, I'll withdraw my motion if somebody can come up with another one, but I just prefer to stick with it because I think we can always come back at a later time and add in a moratorium or, or change it if we need to. But if someone has a better one, I'm open to that as well.
Or is it easier to redefine how many units a hotel or a motel is? Can we do that?
I, I think we're so far flung now.
I think that a hotel is different in that, you know, it has employees, it has staffing onsite. It's, I think, I think it's different category.
Yes, it, it's different. If I can interject, Mayor, a hotel motel has also different standards under the building code as well. So we want to take care of the lodging facilities that are under six units.
I think the temporary use permit kind of leaves some of the concerns that, that Mayor Taylor had when it comes to you know, it getting out of control. Would that, is that a safe, is that a fair statement, Mona?
I think so, because it's maximum of one-year duration and it's subject to certain restrictions. So under what Mayor Taylor and you council member Thomas were saying, staff would bring back an ordinance that allows short-term vacation rentals in the central business, commercial, highway, commercial zones, subject to a special temporary use permit.
And that would, that would slow down, you know, this, this scourge of investments in these properties without the understanding that they would have a permanent opportunity. And I think it gives us control over that.
A ton of permits being pulled, we could, you know, potentially make a change if it seemed like it was gonna be problematic.
So I would, I would move that we instruct staff to come back or to, is it go to the planning commission first and then come back to council? On a temporary use permit in the highway commercial zone for temporary use of resident.
Short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals. Thank you.
So, okay, I, I didn't realize, so this has to go through the planning commission first. I thought it just came to us.
It has to go to planning commission first.
Even though we're the ones that overturn.
And Pierre, is this, is this, you know, doable in the short term versus the ordinance? Does that solve that?
Yes, it's much shorter. It's very, it's a real shortcut.
I'll second the motion.
We have a first and a second? Can we get a roll call?
Council member Borelli?
Hi.
Council member No?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
Hi.
Council member Thomas?
Hi.
Motion passes four to one.
Can I explain just for the public's benefit, just since there was so much back and forth, what just happened? So the council directed staff to bring back an ordinance change would allow short-term vacation rentals to be allowed with a special temporary use permit in the highway commercial, commercial zones. So it's gonna go to the planning commission and then it's gonna come before you for approval.
Thank you.
And a point of order in that we have exceeded our ten o'clock limit and we need to consider either adjourning the meeting or continuing it. And I would move that we could, that we continue the meeting only to do items fourteen and fifteen. And then table the rest, which is not much, but we just moved through this.
I'll second that.
The, you know.
My apologies, I was on mute. Council member Borelli, we'll, we'll take that vote.
Hi.
Council member No?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Hi.
Mayor Taylor?
Hi.
Council member Thomas?
Hi.
Right, thank you, Regina. So we will jump ahead now to item fourteen. Which is, we're, we're request for future agenda items. Is that what you said, Dennis?
Yep, yes, fourteen and fifty.
Okay, I see none. All right, so we will move on to fifteen, consider virtual hybrid setting for February eighth, city council meeting. Mr. Morris?
Yeah, at, at your last meeting, I want to admit, we, we talked about doing a, a hybrid meeting. I did send information to the council based on a, a letter I received from Marshall Hospital concerning increased COVID cases that they're experiencing, both ICU and regular cases. And I recommended that we go just hybrid or just virtual rather than a hybrid live and virtual meeting. I just wanted to get council's recommendation, how we move forward, or if you want to leave that to me based on where we're at two weeks from now, we can do that too, but initially, at this time, I would probably recommend that we stick to a virtual meeting for our next meeting. And then we can take, make a decision at that time on February eighth, how we move forward.
At the same time, I defer to leave.
Yeah, I mean, my personal opinion, I led to be back in person, but if we're not gonna be back in person, hybrid is the absolute worst scenario because we don't have great AV capabilities. So it's like, you miss half of it.
Unless there are big changes, we would be live or, or hybrid or virtual at our next meeting.
What would define whether we are, we are not?
We.
And it would basically be if we see a big improvement in number of cases, et cetera.
We, we've already voted on it, so I mean, this is what we voted on last.
Yeah, I, I figured, I was figuring that the next one would be virtual or hybrid, but you know, if that's virtual better than.
I move that we table this item.
I move that we say virtual next meeting. It's very unsettling not knowing what we're doing. And I think it's harder for the public to, like, you know.
I think we should make a decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we'll, we need to reapprove the, whether we want to continue with virtual at the next meeting anyway, so we'll.
Right.
We do have to do that, yes.
Yeah.
You gonna open up a public comment then?
Yep.
Yes, okay, let's open it up for public comment.
Oh, a comment is now open for item fifteen point one, consider virtual hybrid setting for February eighth. Go ahead, Sue.
Just go virtual and be done with it.
Don't. It was like two seconds, good job.
Tell us virtual and we'll be done.
Ruth, go ahead.
Ditto.
Okay, oh, you guys are getting quick.
Two public comments under thirty seconds, that's amazing. All right, I move that we go virtual in our next meeting.
Second.
All right, first and second, roll call.
Council member Borelli?
Hi.
Council member No?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Saragosa? Mayor Taylor?
Hi.
Council member Thomas?
Hi, we finally all agree on something.
All right, so with that is ten forty-two and we're going to adjourn the meeting for tonight. Thank you for, for everyone that called in. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.